Good evening. I will call this meeting of the Housing Authority for the City of Salem for Monday, April 26, 2021 to order. If the recorder will please call the roll.
Vice Chair Stapleton?
Yeah.
Commissioner Anderson? I see you.
Present.
Commissioner Phillips?
Here.
Commissioner Liang?
Yeah.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yeah.
Chair Hoi?
Here.
Commissioner Nordike?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Vice Chair Stapleton, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Not today.
Thank you. And I see that we have nobody signed up for public comment. Vice Chair Stapleton, the consent calendar, please.
Yeah, I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar.
All right, the consent calendar consists of items 3.1A, which is March 22, 2021 Salem Housing Authority Draft Minutes. And that concludes the consent counter.
Thank you. Any discussion? The recorder will please call the roll.
Commissioner Phillips?
Hi.
Commissioner Liang?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Nordike?
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
Commissioner, excuse me, Vice Chair Stapleton?
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Chair Hoi?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. We have no public hearings. We have no special orders of business. So that takes us to the most important part, information reports. And I see Ms. Utes has joined us, the administrator. And I was hoping that you would start by sharing with us some information on some of the assistance programs that you have available. I think that the public is not maybe fully aware of some of the opportunities that are available to them. And I was hoping you could outline maybe some of the rental assistance and mortgage assistance programs that we have. If you could start with that and then would share anything else you'd like to. That'd be great.
Good evening. I'm Nicole Yez. I'm the Housing Administrator for Salem Housing Authority. And tonight, we did want to just share a little bit about the Salem Emergency Mortgage Assistance Program, which is, we did start this about a month ago. It is some HUD funding through the COVID-19 pandemic that we received upwards of $100,000 to assist any of our, anyone in the Salem community that is in arrears on their mortgage. So there's additional information that can be found, not only on the program management report, but as well on our website. And we've updated the website with the latest information, income requirements. But this is a really great opportunity for any mortgage holder that may be in the arrears to be able to get caught up and get some assistance if they meet the income requirements. And so we really want to spread the word. We've been really working hard to get that information out to, to banks and to local nonprofits and get the word out and spread it as quickly as possible to ensure those most in need can get that help. As well as that, we're gearing up for the landlord compensation fund, which is run through Oregon Housing and Community Services. They're about to start and open that second round of applications. So any landlords that are potentially in the rear for rent, this is a great opportunity to be able to get some of that rent compensation caught up. The requirements of that program are well outlined on Oregon Housing and Community Services website. We're the third-party holder that verifies who the actual landowner is, and we make notification to tenants and landlords that payments have been made, as well as get those payments out the door. The other program we're also gearing up for, and we've, we're going to quickly be opening up for, is for the ESG 2, the grant received. We have, actually are going to be hiring three limited-duration housing navigators to get out there into the camps and to help those people that are vulnerable, that need some additional assistance. And so we're looking for any applicants for that. And that opening should be on the City of Salem's HR website here shortly. On top of that, we've just been very busy with all the different programs that we are trying to manage for the COVID-19 pandemic. And I wanted to update you all that our lobby is now under renovation. We're very excited about that, but our doors are fully closed to the public. As well as next week, they'll be closed for deliveries and any other. We will be checking mail for our normal operations. But the renovations is in heavy demolition at this point, and it will go into some abatement next week. So all staff will be 100% remote. We're looking forward to getting this done in early June. And hopefully, one day, being able to get the doors safely back open with kiosks and different meeting areas for our clients.
And for the record, I think it's important to note that this is a result of some unfortunate vandalism that occurred recently. Is that correct?
Well, we have that as well. We did have some unfortunate vandalism. So we do appear to have some boarded-up windows, but that will hopefully be resolved here quickly. And we should have new windows in place within the next probably 10 days.
Great. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from Ms. Utes? Commissioner Liang?
Thank you, Commissioner Hoi. Director Utes, my question has to do with the Emergency Mortgage Assistance Program. I, when I was reviewing it, I still see that there's a webpage that people who are interested in more information would go to that webpage. But is there assistance available for people who, let's say, English is not their first language? Or any kind of, and what kind of documents do people need to have ready and available to submit to be considered for the mortgage assistance program?
So a lot of it's actually, it's a one application. We are in the process of translating that into multiple, multiple languages, actually the cover page. So some of these are formal head documents that we do not have the ability to change any of the language on them. But what we would like to do is offer that assistance to anybody that has a barrier for language to be able to get them a third-party assistance, to be able to sit down either via Teams or Zoom or however it may be, to ensure that we can make that connection and they have that same opportunity as well. So the cover letter that is going to be broadcasted onto our page here shortly should also be in multiple languages or have the ability in multiple languages to request for additional assistance. We are getting that out to many of our nonprofit local communities, such as the Grand Ron Tribes. We're getting it out to Mano Mono. We're getting it out to, to many of our local nonprofit community to hopefully get the word out to those who may be least likely to apply, as well as provide this opportunity tonight in case you have anybody that contacts you as well.
Excellent. Any other questions? Commissioner Nordike? You're still on mute, Commissioner Nordike.
Oh, I hate being that guy. Okay. Hi, thanks, everyone. I appreciate it. So I received an email from a resident, David Anderson, and he had some concerns that he wanted me to share with staff. We, you all will recall, we had a major power outage around the city not too long ago. And he expressed some concern about the emergency lighting at a Housing Authority building. And he just wanted to relay concerns about having more lighting that can pop up in the event of a power failure. And while we know that this particular power outage was really, really bad, I myself had no power for two weeks. I know that for our senior citizens who live in Housing Authority complexes, I understand the need to have lighting in the event of power outages or other emergencies. So I wanted to pass along that feedback at this meeting, and I'll be sure to send his email to city staff. But I just wanted to make sure I put that on folks' radar screen. That's all I had.
Thank you. Commissioner Stapleton?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a shout out to you and your staff. I had some questions about this mortgage assistance program and sent an email asking, you know, how are we getting the word out? And I got an email back, and I swear, it's like 20 different ways long. And the email just kept scrolling and scrolling of all the radio stations that it's going out on, the social media, the, the different groups within the city that we partner with. So I just really appreciate the forward thinking on that in trying to get as much information out to people as possible. I really, really appreciate that.
Thank you. Our goal is to get the word out now in hopes that we can get some of those individuals caught up before it's too late.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments from Ms. Utes? All right. Seeing no further business for the Housing Authority, this meeting is adjourned.
I want to just check my mic. Is it working okay?
Yes.
Good. Thank you. I'll call this meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency for Monday, April 26, to order. If the recorder would please call the roll.
Board Member Stapleton?
Here.
Board Member Anderson?
Present.
Board Member Phillips?
Here.
Board Member Liang?
Yeah.
Board Member Gonzalez?
Yeah.
Board Member Hoi?
Here.
Board Member Nordike?
Here.
Board Member Lewis?
Here.
Chair Bennett?
Here. Any additions or deletions, Councilor Hoi?
No.
Okay. And then I don't have any public comments signed up. So why don't we go on to the consent calendar?
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Second by?
Liang.
Liang, okay, thank you.
So the consent calendar tonight consists of item 3.1A, the March 8, 2021 Draft Urban Renewal Agency Minutes. And item 3.3A, reappointments and appointments to the Downtown Advisory Board, North Gateway Redevelopment Advisory Board, and West Salem Redevelopment Advisory Board. Item 3.3B, ratification of the Affordable Housing Agreement, Collateral Assignment and Subordination Agreement with M W I C, Jory Salem, LLC, and Washington Federal Bank. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Very good. Thank you. Any discussion? If the recorder would please call a roll.
Board Member Liang?
Aye.
Board Member Gonzalez?
Aye.
Board Member Hoi?
Aye.
Board Member Nordike?
Aye.
Board Member Lewis?
Aye.
Board Member Stapleton?
Aye.
Board Member Anderson?
Aye.
Board Member Phillips?
Aye.
Chair Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. See if there's anything else on there that I missed. We have information reports. Ms. Rutherford, do you have any information you want to report on?
I do not have any updates this evening.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Rutherford? Okay, thank you. Seeing no other business, we're adjourned. Okay. Call this meeting of the Salem City Council to order for April 26. If the recorder would please call a roll.
Councilor Stapleton?
Here.
Councilor Anderson?
Present.
Councilor Phillips?
Here.
Councilor Liang?
Here.
Councilor Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilor Hoi?
Here.
Councilor Nordike?
Here.
Councilor Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Bennett?
Here. Okay. Additions and deletions, Councilor Hoi?
Yes, I move, I move approval of additions and deletions to the agenda.
Second.
Second by Anderson.
So we have item 1, 1.3A, we have a revised proclamation attached to the, to the report. And then item 6A has been removed from the agenda by the city, city manager. That's it.
Great. Okay, discussion? All right, if the recorder would please call a roll.
Councilor Phillips?
Aye.
Councilor Liang?
Aye.
Councilor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilor Hoi?
Aye.
Councilor Nordike?
Aye.
Councilor Lewis?
Aye.
Councilor Stapleton?
Aye.
Councilor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, this is an opportunity for councilors to comment. Any councilors have a comment? Councilor Nordike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I wanted to take this opportunity to remind folks, you know, a lot of times, the number one question I get as a city councillor is, what is the city doing to address homelessness? And when I go to neighborhood association meetings, I frequently update folks on what we're doing. And sometimes constituents even ask me, and they'll send me an email or give me a call or what have you. So I want to take this opportunity to briefly highlight just a few of the things that we are currently doing as a city. First of all, if you don't attend our Salem Housing Authority meetings, then you might not know that we currently serve over 7,800 combined clients through various Salem Housing Authority programs, 7,800 plus. Many of you may know about the Housing Rental Assistance Program, which has housed about 300 chronically homeless individuals. Maybe you've heard of the permanent housing solutions that the city has invested in, like Redwoods Crossing, with two more programs in the works, Sequoia Crossings and Uquina Hall. We've hired temporary housing navigators to help connect people to housing. We voted to support a safe car camping program with private owner approval. We voted to ratify the execution of Affordable Housing Agreement at Jory Apartments, which will include 36 affordable units. We work with the VA to provide vouchers to at-risk homeless youth. We recently bought durable pallet shelters, which can be reused over and over again to provide temporary shelter as a temporary stepping stone to permanency. We recently supported temporary shelter at the fairgrounds, where plenty of people were able to stay there and spend a safe night while they went to their job or did their medical appointments. And several people transitioned from the fairground shelter to permanent housing. We've supported programs like Safe Sleep, a United Way Shelter for Homeless Women. And recently, earlier tonight at the Salem Housing Authority meeting, we talked about Salem's Emergency Mortgage Program. I provide updates on things like this on my Facebook page, and I'm sure that all of our city councillors are doing their part to share the information. So that's just a brief snapshot of what we are doing. But I encourage folks, ask yourself also, what can you do to assist? I can tell you that on places like the city's website, my Facebook page, Salem City Councillor Vanessa Nordike, and plenty of other pages, there are so many other ways that you can assist, by volunteering your time at a shelter, by donating gently-used boots or a tent. There are so many ways that you can give within your time constraints and within your budget. So I ask you, please join us in being a part of the solution. And also join us in celebrating all of the nonprofits in the area, all of the businesses who donate food for free to homeless persons. There are a variety of private sector and public sector folks who are all working to pitch in and to reduce homelessness, notwithstanding the gut punch of both the pandemic and the wildfires. So between those two things, I just encourage folks, please help us help our community. Please help us educate everyone on what we're doing and what and how we can do even more to reduce homelessness. So thank you all, and I appreciate the opportunity to share.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Gonzalez, did I see your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So my name is Jose Gonzalez. And so today, I'm using sign language in honor of my new friend Garland. And I met him when we toured the Garten facility on Industrial Drive Northeast. And his story, combined with everything that happens at that facility, made me proud that that's in my ward. You know, a few comments today. March, April are the driest months ever for Oregon. You know, so I know now's the time to start encouraging and sharing tips on how to use less water. But I remember from years ago, when serving on the Budget Committee, some of the staff were saying that we had turned a corner on water usage as far as the public and knowing to reduce it. But it was such a lot, the amounts were dropping or not going up as fast to support the fixed costs of our water delivery system, you know, so just wanted to put it, put that out there on everybody's radar. And, you know, lastly, I sort of piggybacking Councilor Nordike's comments, I want to acknowledge the death of Tammy Federici, 40-year-old woman who was found dead at the Salem Marcus Street encampments. The police don't suspect anything suspicious, you know, but how, people that are unhoused, we don't track their death because it's not a question that's asked. And I'm hoping that's changed. And, and I'm sure she's not the first. I just wanted to put that on everybody's radar, too. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councilor Hoi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And following up on councillor Gonzalez's comments, that is a situation in my ward that is increasingly frustrating for me and for a lot of Salem residents. It's an unsafe situation. And the only way to get to those where people are staying is to cross either a freeway on ramp or a freeway off ramp. We've had six vehicle pedestrian incidents since September, I think, two of which, I think, at least two of which resulted in a fatality. And it's just an unsafe situation. And I've talked to all of our legislative contingency about having, asking ODOT to, to, to work on that. And so far, we're not getting anywhere. And I know that a lot of people are frustrated with the city for not resolving this situation. And I'm frustrated because it's not, there's nothing that we can do about it. It's really an ODOT responsibility, although our partners are working very closely to try to rehouse those folks. We, we, we send our service providers there to help relocate folks on a volunteer basis. But ultimately, the, the work belongs to the state of Oregon. It's state of Oregon property, and we don't have any jurisdiction. I'm getting more and more frustrated with the situation. It's very dangerous. Like councillor Gonzalez mentioned, we did have a death there recently. And it's just the recent one, the most recent one. And it's certainly something that's, there's something that has to change with that. And I just, I'm going to keep voicing that until I, till somehow we see some action. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hoi. I sure agree with you on that. I've talked recently with representatives and senators about that problem, too. It's one, and of course, we have our own. I think just drive down Liberty Street and take a good look and then ask us and management why that's allowed to continue. Or go out to Cascade Gateway Park, or, you know, it's, it's a, it's a terrible problem. There are, in many cases, we're dealing with folks who are highly resistant to moving indoors, whatever the indoor is. And we continue, I think, to be the victims of a missing state and county mental health program. And we just don't have one. I hope at some point, and it's one I keep talking to legislators about, that without their help, without them taking on the cause that they used to, this used to be basic to state government. But so I appreciate your comment, councillor Gonzalez and councillor Nordike. This is a, still a very, very frustrating, despite all the hard work that was outlined by councillor Nordike. We just can't seem to get a dent in some of the most discouraging of the situations we see each day. Councilor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm going to speak on my own issue, but I agree with everything that's been said. We've got the problem, but we, through various reasons, don't have the resources to deal with it, whether it's federal, state, or county. So that's, that's a continuing concern. I, I have to say that I, I want to speak a little bit of my usual topic, which councillors Hoi and Gonzalez talked about, which is, from another angle, the death of innocent people in terms of innocent, in terms of their deaths. And we've got, I'm here almost on my monthly discussion of pedestrian deaths. And I know we had 11 of them in 2020, and we are now on our fourth one in 2021. And this was a fatal hit-and-run that occurred in South Salem on Friday, the 16th. A 60-year-old woman named, 61-year-old woman named, and I'm gonna, I won't get the right name right, but Galena de Vorskaya, she died in 400 block, 4,500 block of Commercial Street, which is near Winco, which is right near where the young teenager died. You know, a year and a half, she was probably in 2020. You know, so I, I am a broken record. And what causes these, the deaths, is the speed. The 20, you've got like a 90% chance of surviving. 40, you've got a 95% chance of dying. And so this relates directly to the speed limit requests that we have made to whatever it is, the State Transportation Review Board, or that we discussed the last several meetings. That's on 45th and 17th and one other street. I'm not sure which street it is, but in the North Salem area. We need to get the speed down. We need to do something. And it's not just on the commercial streets that we talked about, as in commercial, the big streets, but it's on the smaller streets, too. And we just have to be careful. This is not a way for anyone to end their time on earth. And again, the city, we've got to do something about it. And, you know, I hope I'm not here next month, but statistics tell you I'll be here next month, talking about the same thing. Thank you.
Yeah. Councilor Stapleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And yeah, I wanted to, you guys are all talking about really serious topics, and those are ones I wholeheartedly am behind, all the things you've said. But the things I wanted to highlight tonight are actually on the opposite end of things, a little bit more upbeat. And that is the R-Salem meetings that are happening every week on Wednesdays. I went to my first one this last Wednesday, and it was on transportation. They have a meeting at noon and one at 5:30, so that lots of people can come. And I tell you, it's a great meeting. It was so much fun to participate. It was active, interactive polling happening and time for question and answers. And they're just doing really a great job of that and making it as available to people as possible so that we can hear from everybody in this really important planning process. So I wanted to let everybody know that you can go to cityasalem.net/r-salem. And on there, you, there's a link to previous meetings. You can watch them on YouTube. And then there's also a link to a schedule this week, this coming Wednesday, is Parks and Rec. So a really, really important one, one that I'm excited to attend. And again, the links to the meetings are there as well. And I also found out that they have this really great Gen Z focus group that's happening. And this is for those in our community that are in high school and in college. And they've had a meeting once this last Saturday, and they have one tonight in a few minutes, half an hour or so, at 7 o'clock. And then the last one is this coming Wednesday. And so it looks like they have their meetings on air meet. And I am sadly too old to know what that means. But I am guessing Gen Zs know exactly what that means. And you can find the link to those meetings on the website as well. And it looks like you need to register for that one. And so again, high school and college age, you are the future of our city. Please come and give us your public comment and your, you know, voice your concerns and what you want to see for your city. And lastly, I wanted to acknowledge again that April is Child Abuse Prevention Month. And so if you have seen all of those blue ribbons tied to trees or the blue pinwheels or signs up around town, that is what that's all about. And it's one of the things that we can do to reduce child abuse in our communities is by constantly bringing it up and getting it into the attention of so many people. So I really appreciate all of the help that the city has been in helping spread the word on that. Councillor Nordick and I did attend that training this last month, and that was hosted by Liberty House. And it was an amazing training. It was free, two hours, open to anybody. I really encourage you to take it if you're interested. And then I also wanted to take a moment and to ask the city manager if we participate in those trainings at all with our staff. And I know we have so many programs that are connected to youth and youth services. And so I wanted to ask if we participate in that training or what we do to, to help, you know, make sure that that is a safe environment for the kids in our community. And then just to also say that there's so many, I guess, resources would be a great word on Liberty House. They have these great Code of Conducts that people can use for their babysitter or for their Little League teams. Just so many ways that we can make a commitment to our community to, to make sure that it's safe and healthy for everybody.
Miss Manager, did you want to?
Yeah, I'd like to come back with that information on the training for council rather than ask staff to wing it this evening, including the former executive director of the Liberty House, who now works for the city, or Deputy Chief Miller. So I'd really like to come back and, and provide that information rather than put them on the spot and ask them to.
And the question was, was regarding staff training, right, Virginia? Did I get that?
Yes. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, this is a great resource. It's free. It's short. I know we pay for time, but just to make sure that we're doing everything we can for our kids here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Liang?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'm going to kind of be the, I guess, the party pooper. So sorry, Councilor Stapleton. I, I maybe you should have went last. So, sorry, Counselor Stapleton. I, I maybe you should have went last. So, first and foremost, I'd like to echo Counselor's sentiments about the deaths of our unsheltered and our sheltered residents, from speed to unsafe driving. Please, slow down, put the phone down, and pay attention when you're on the road, especially when it's at night and when it's raining. So, there are many things that are happening in Salem, in the state and throughout our nation. And let me tell you one thing, after a year of dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic, this year has been both a blessing and a curse. It's been a curse because of the countless number of people who have become sick and who are now forever affected health-wise, and other countless others who have died. Is it a curse because of the closures that, to keep people safe? Businesses have been shuttered, shuttered. Families have struggled and have been torn apart. We're seeing so many people suffer from hunger, from having a physical home over their roofs, over their heads, to a well-paying job. We're seeing an increase in the homeless. People are suffering. A larger number of people who have mental health needs and not even enough services to provide services to them. But it's also been a good time for some people, for people who've been able to work from home, who've been able to spend time with family more, to appreciate the little things, to focusing on what matters most, our children, our elders, our families, and our neighbors and colleagues. A time to appreciate the little things. Yet, we're also still seeing a rise in COVID-19 cases. This time, we're seeing an increase among unvaccinated people who are younger and who do not have any underlying health conditions. Many of you are tired. I know I am. And many of you want to be with your friends, to socialize freely, to spend time sitting down together, eating in a restaurant. However, we cannot stop following public health safety practices. So, I'm imploring everybody to please continue to wear a mask, to maintain your social distance, and to please take care of yourselves and each other. I'm also here to talk about another instance of racism that's happening within our community. Now, Salem prides itself on being a city that is open and friendly to everybody. Salem wants businesses in our community. Yet, the way we respond to certain community members or do not respond to hateful racist acts against them is very telling. Some, if not all of you, know who Jonathan Jones is. He's the co-owner of Epilogue Kitchen and Cocktails. I, as well as some of my other fellow counselors and countless community members, have spoken out in support of Mr. Jones. When you're outside his restaurant, waiting for your gluten-free waffle and fried chicken or your meatball sandwich, his restaurant is hard to miss. On his window are the names of countless names of murdered black people. Over the weekend, I learned last, I learned of another incident against his property. A white woman who was caught on camera had graffitied his window. He is tired of constantly dealing with racist people threatening him, his family, and his business. Salem keeps talking about wanting to keep and bring diverse businesses and residents into the community. But, well, how is Salem doing this if we're continuing to allow such hateful actions? What are we doing to protect our people? How are we ensuring that people are safe? I'm not asking for Salem leadership or Salem residents for calmness or staying quiet. I am demanding accountability and holding people to their actions and words, from our leadership, from our residents, and from our other businesses. How can Salem mean peace if we're not taking care of each other? You know, I have previously shared some of my experiences dealing with racism, specifically as a resident in Salem. I know others who are experiencing and dealing with racism as well. But other than denouncing racism, we need to do more. We need to ensure that our Black, Indigenous, Asian, Pacific Islander, Latinx, and countless other communities of color feel safe. Wake up, everybody. Racism is here. Racism is not going away. So, what are we going to do to make sure that our community is protected? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, uh, Counselor Phillips?
Um, wow, this is a great body to be on. Thank you, Mayor Bennett. Um, I think everything that I wanted to say was indirectly or directly mentioned by my outstanding colleagues, but I'll just double down. So, um, you know, two things, uh, in the public safety purview, um, I, as an emergency room doctor here at Salem, uh, Salem Hospital is the busiest emergency room in the state of Oregon. I have cared for more than my fair share of pedestrians, um, and other people involved in, in traffic fatalities. So, the news of the death on South Commercial in Ward Three, um, where I live and represent, um, was really tragic. I thank Counselor Anderson for keeping, um, our attention on this important issue. I've met with, uh, Public Works Director, uh, Peter Fernandez, and we're going to try to get, you know, maybe some preliminary data. Um, you know, I don't have a motion ready now to, to ask for trying to lower speed on Commercial here, but forty's just too fast. I don't drive that speed, um, in the section between like Trader Joe's and Winco. Um, so, uh, in a future point, I would like us to strongly consider lowering the speed there. There's a lot more work that needs to be done, but that's, that's imperative. Um, we've got two deaths, too many already. Um, and that's just in my time here in Salem. Okay, second, uh, the Market Street overpass. It's unsafe. Uh, when I asked, uh, City Manager Steve Powers, I, I was told that it was three deaths out of the six traffic incidents. So, three deaths and three near deaths. That's unacceptable. Um, and, and for people to fully understand the problem, why can't we, as the Salem City Council, just fix this? It's been said before, but I'll say it again. It's not our jurisdiction. This is ODOT. This is the state. This is why everybody else has mentioned reaching out to those leaders in our state legislature. We need a policy change. The COVID-19 pandemic is real, but we've got to have some flexibility when we get these real-life situations that are more dangerous than even the pandemic. Okay, finally, the pandemic. I agree with everything Counselor Leung has said. Um, I mean, we're at real risk of a fourth wave. We've seen the numbers go up week after week after week. We've seen fifteen to twenty-three percent increases in our case rates. This last week, we've averaged eight-hundred-and-twenty-five new cases per day of COVID-19 in the state of Oregon. And as a percentage, Marion and Polk County are unfortunately, you know, punching above their weight class. Um, we've had some of the highest case positivity rates in the state. So, I mean, this is still real. You know, there, there's hope. We've got, you know, multiple safe and effective vaccines. So, if I could just beg you to do two things out there. Um, you know, wear a mask when you're outside of your bubble. Um, masks work. They're incredible. It's simple. It's easy to do. Yes, they're mildly annoying, but they could save your life and save your loved ones. And then, same thing, get a vaccine. You know, as of April nineteenth, every single Oregonian over the age of sixteen and up is eligible to get a vaccine. It's so easy. It's free. It's convenient. They're safe and effective. You know, if you want to learn more, ask a friend. Nearly, uh, you know, forty to fifty percent of us, uh, have had our first or second, um, vaccine. So, you know, ask around. If you're looking for, um, online access, just Google Salem Health, uh, or Google the Oregon Health Authority and COVID-19. It's really easy to get a vaccine. Um, it's convenient. It's safe. It matters. It could save your life or the life of a loved one. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Counselor Phillips. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, just one really quick follow-up to Counselor Phillips. Today's my two-week mark after my second shot, so I'm officially vaccinated today, fully. So, thank you for that reminder.
That's fantastic news. Thanks you for sharing that.
I'm two days after my first shot, so I've got another couple of weeks to go. Very good. Okay, any, anyone else? Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. A cou- couple of items quickly. Uh, regarding the item that was deleted from tonight's agenda, that will be back. Uh, it needed some additional work before it was, uh, ready for council. So, that will be back on your agenda for the May tenth meeting. Second item, the independent assessment of the Salem Police Department is concluding. The Steering Committee is meeting this Thursday. Uh, the final report, the final assessment, and the police chief's response will be provided to City Council. Uh, I am confident that the assessment will help improve community safety while enhancing police and community trust. A first step will be, uh, strategic plan, the creation of a strategic plan for the department, which will incorporate many, if not all, of the assessments, findings, and recommendations. The last item is, you know, thank you for the comments regarding both the, the troubling comments as well as the more, uh, positive comments regarding the city and, and our community's efforts to, to help our unsheltered neighbors. Uh, that work is ongoing and, and will continue no matter the obstacles and the barriers. I would urge, uh, community members who, who want to help to please do so through the nonprofits and, and not through directly assisting our unhoused neighbors. Uh, one of the impacts, it might seem minor when we're talking about human lives, but one of the impacts that I certainly received many complaints about is the garbage and the debris. And one contributing, uh, fact to that are the donations that people make directly to our unhoused. So, please, uh, have people support this great need through existing nonprofit organizations. Also, uh, in regards to some of the more problematic city areas, uh, we will be, uh, marshaling and coordinating our, our social service efforts, our law enforcement efforts, and our cleanup efforts to hit some of the, uh, particularly, uh, unsightly and problematic, unhealthy, uh, locations. Uh, so that work, uh, will be, uh, un- underway this, underway this week. And, and we will continue to be, uh, diligent in our efforts, although as has been discussed already, it is, it is a very significant challenge for our, for our city, for our region, and, and for the state. Thank you. Thank you. You're on mute, Mayor.
How's that? Okay? Good. Thank you. I've got this kind of funky little microphone I'm using, and I keep wondering if it actually works anymore. So, I'm, because I was having trouble, uh, in earlier meetings, so do let me know if it gives out on me. I've got three, uh, proclamations we're, we're doing, uh, this, uh, this week. I'll do the first two, and then, uh, Counselor Leung is going to do the third. Um, whereas International Firefighters Day was established in nineteen ninety-nine to remember firefighters worldwide lost in the line of duty protecting the safety of us all. And whereas firefighters dedicated their lives with extraordinary courage in situations that oftentimes put them in harm's way in order to protect the lives and property of others. And whereas Salem's Fire Department was formed as the alert hook and ladder in eighteen fifty-seven, fighting fires with leather buckets, ladders, and a few basic tools. And whereas two firefighters have lost their lives in the line of duty in the past one-hundred-sixty-four years, the Salem Fire Department has been active. Floyd McMullin, a Willamette University student, was a sleeper volunteer firefighter at the East Salem Firehouse. He perished in the state Capitol fire of nineteen thirty-five. Deputy Fire Marshal George Ventura suffered a fatal heart attack while on duty in nineteen eighty-six. And whereas the city of Salem's honor, Salem honors its current and past firefighters who embody courage and conviction and have put their lives on the line for those in our community. Now, therefore, I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, do hereby proclaim May fourth, twenty twenty-one, as International Firefighters Day, and encourage residents to recognize and appreciate the selfless dedication of Salem's firefighters. And, uh, invited Greg Hadley, Assistant Fire Chief of Operations, Matt Brozovic, Captain, also President of Salem Professional Firefighters. The Sil- Salem IAFF Local Three Fourteen was founded August twelfth, nineteen thirty-one. And Mary Louise Vanatta, Executive Director of the Salem Foundation, uh, Fire Foundation, uh, to receive the proclamation. So, I'm not sure who would like to speak. Matt, would you like to go first?
Sure, I'll go first, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the one-hundred-and-seventy firefighter paramedics that proudly serve this community twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five, I proudly accept this proclamation and thank you for your recognition, recognition of our members, for all the work they are doing day in and day out to protect the citizens of this great community. Again, thank you for your continued support and stay safe.
Thank you very much, Matt. Really appreciate it. Uh, Mr., uh, Chief Hadley? Were you going to say anything?
Actually, I, I just wanted to say on behalf of the Fire Chief Mike Niblock and men and women of the City of Salem, uh, Fire Department, we do appreciate this and, uh, thank you for the recognition.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, and Mary Louise Vanatta?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Counselors, on behalf of the Salem Fire Foundation, the not, nonprofit arm that supports, uh, your fire department and your firefighters, um, it's our great pleasure to, uh, accept this proclamation, and we appreciate your honoring our firefighters. Thank you.
Well, we thank all of you, uh, more than you'll probably ever know. So, thank, thanks very much. Uh, I have a second proclamation. Uh, whereas the Elsinore Theater was constructed in nineteen twenty-six by George Guthrie for the purpose of hosting live performances and showing silent films in downtown Salem. And whereas the theater was designed by the firm Lawrence and Holford, with LSF Lawrence being the first dean of the University of Oregon School of Architecture. And whereas built in the grand Tudor Gothic style, the Elsinore was envisioned to resemble its namesake, the Denmark Castle depicted in Shakespeare's play Hamlet. And whereas the structure was added to the National Register of Historic Places in nineteen ninety-four. And whereas, following a series of ownership transfers and financial challenges beginning in the nineteen fifties, the Elsinore was restored to its original grandeur in the early two thousands, thanks to amazing community support. And it remains a celebrated performing arts venue drawing people to downtown Salem for nearly a century. And whereas, as a longstanding community partner for the arts, we celebrate the art, Elsinore Theater's ninety-fifth anniversary. Uh, there, now therefore I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, do hereby proclaim May twenty twenty-one is Elsinore Theater Month in Salem, and encourage residents to recognize and appreciate the world-class programming the Elsinore has bestowed on our community for the past ninety-five years. Dated this twenty-sixth, uh, day of April, two thousand twenty-one. And, uh, Tom Fron is here to accept this, I think.
I, I am. I made it. Mayor Bennett. Counselors, thank you very much. On behalf of our Board of Directors and, and our staff, um, I gladly accept this proclamation. Uh, what, it took ninety-five years, though. We're, we're, we're honored. We're delighted. Um, we wish that we were in a different time so that we could do what we do. Um, you know, we exist in this town to provide diverse entertainment, to enhance the quality of life, and, and to preserve the beautiful building, which, as you may or may not know, will be ninety-five here on the twenty-eighth of May. So, thank you very much. We're honored.
Thank you, Tom, for all the great work you do, and we're looking forward to the next ninety-five years. So, well, I am. I don't know. Everybody else is probably.
So, so are we.
Very optimistic, Peter.
And I, I would like to invite everybody to our virtual birthday celebration on the twenty-sixth of May. That starts at five-thirty. It's free, and we'll be celebrating, we'll be entertaining, and kind of telling our story.
Great.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Okay. And where's that going to be? Is that at elsinore.com or what?
It is. It is. You just go there and, and sign up, and then you can see the live stream.
Great. Okay. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Leung, Asian, American, Pacific Islander Heritage Month?
Thank you. Um, I'd like to, if possible, for anybody who's representing MIC and/or Paradise of Samoa or any other API groups to, if you have a moment, to turn on your camera, if you're in a space to do so. Um, I see there is Tassie, and I saw Tani. So, um, if one or both of you would be able to turn on, that would be great. Uh, so the proclamation, whereas following the nineteen ninety passage of an amendment to a joint resolution of Congress, Presidents George H.W. Bush declared the month of May Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, noting the significant contributions in science, commerce, education, and the arts made by Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. And whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have demonstrated their dedication to ideals upon which the United States was founded and have worked for the advancement of human rights and democratic ideals throughout the world. And whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have a proud legacy of service and dedication to our community, including the Marshall East Islander and Micronesian Islander communities. And whereas we recognize Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders whose love for family and community have helped to sustain our city, particularly through the commitment of the Asian Ameri- Asian Pacific American Network of Oregon, Apano, the Micronesian Islander Committee, MIC, and Paradise of Samoa. Whereas the city is grateful to the members of the Mayor's International- Whereas the city is grateful to the members of the Mayor's International Council, who highlight the heritage of the Asian American and Pacific Islander communities. And now therefore, and I am not Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, do hereby proclaim May 2021 as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, and ask that residents of Salem join us all in this special tribute to celebrate the contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders, dated this 26th day of April 2021.
Thank you, Counselor Leung. Was there anyone else that wanted to speak on this that you?
I'm not sure if Tassi would be willing to speak. Tassi, are you in a space to say a few words?
Tahani, would you like to say anything? Your mute's on. Okay, great, well, thank you, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on then I've got two people signed up for public comment. They're not related to anything on the agenda, but I'd like to give them a chance to get on and get off if they'd like to. And if they're not here right now, I'll catch them later in the in the show. Okay, Scott Snyder. Oh, apparently they were expecting.
Hello.
There he is, Scott, hi, Scott, got three minutes. Thanks for.
Yes, hi, good evening. My name is Scott Snyder. I manage the Grand Hotel Downtown Salem, as well as the Chairperson for the Salem Area Lodging Association. The reason I'm speaking tonight is in support of Counselor Nordike's proposal for assistance with the homeless situation and the impact that it's having on our community as far as the welcoming atmosphere. If anybody has driven, gotten off Interstate 5 near Market Street, or, you know, the downtown, even though the parks are Wallace Marine and Gateway Park are being used for designated camping, there's still a lot of homeless impact. It's having a detrimental impact on Salem's welcoming atmosphere. And when we learned a little bit more about the Kahoots Program that is being looked at for fashioning here in Salem, the lodging community was very excited about seeing how that could develop. Many of our Salem hotels that are located along Interstate 5 and Hawthorne are being very negatively impacted by homeless camps that are cruising the parking lots, interacting with travelers in a very aggressive manner. And, you know, the police are definitely restricted on how much they can do and how much manpower there is. And so we are anxious to help see that get under control. I know there's a, as I was listening, you know, earlier, there's, there's, you know, these are people's lives, and that is not to be discounted. But, you know, I think it's very important to understand the economic impact that something like this can have, and and we we would like to help see a change to the current situation.
Great, thanks, Scott, very much. Okay, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder, I appreciate your time. As I recall, you submitted a letter in support of a mobile response unit on behalf of the Salem Area Lodging Association when this came before council for a motion to study back in November of 2020. And I just want to point that out because, as you may have noticed, we have some new faces since your last letter of support. I take it the Salem Area Lodging Association is still supportive of a mobile response unit in town?
We're very much open to looking at solutions that are going to help make Salem more livable, more welcoming for visitors and residents as well.
Great, well, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Hey, anyone else? Great, thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
I'll try one more time with Aaron, Aaron Westfall, just in case you're here. All right. Move on then to the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent calendar with the exception of item 3.2A pulled by Counselor Nordike.
Second by Stapleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that leaves us with item 3.1A, the April 12, 2021 Draft City Council Minutes, item 3.1B, the April 19, 2021 Draft City Council Work Session Minutes, and item 3.3A, Special Appointment of Chair of the Mid-Willamette Valley Cable Regulatory Commission. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Any discussion? The recorder, please call the roll.
Counselor Leung.
Hi.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Hi.
Counselor Hoy.
Hi.
Counselor Nordike.
Hi.
Counselor Lewis.
Hi.
Counselor Stapleton.
Hi.
Counselor Anderson.
Hi.
Counselor Phillips.
Hi.
Mayor Bennett.
Hi. Okay, motion passes. We'll go then to public hearings. Our first public hearing is 21-149. If the circle read it or our staff present it, what do you want to do here?
The City Council will now conduct a public hearing to consider the annexation of territory located at 2527 and 2547 Robbins Lane Southeast. The criteria applicable to the decision is SRC 260.060C. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable criteria or other criteria which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue prior to the close of the public hearing in person, well, or via remote video, in writing, or failure to provide statements or evidence with sufficient specificity to provide the parties and the City Council an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. A similar, excuse me, a similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by testimony from the following. The applicant is limited to 10 minutes, applicable neighborhood associations limited to five minutes, other interested parties are limited to three minutes, and the applicant may have up to seven minutes rebuttal testimony limited to issues raised during the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll begin with the staff report.
Good evening, I'm Pamela Cole, Planner with the Community Development Department. Tonight, our first annexation report is for annexation case number C 730 for territory at 2527 and 2547 Robbins Lane Southeast. I'd like to enter the staff report attachments and presentation into the record. The subject property is three tax lots, and these are owned by the petitioner. The three tax lots are approximately 42 acres, and they're contiguous to city limits on the west and on the south. The territory shown on this map with crosshatch and with a bold black outline is approximately 47 acres because it also includes some right-of-way of Robbins Lane Southeast, Brentwood Drive Southeast, and Interstate 5 right-of-way. The property is contiguous to city limits, therefore annexation is required to obtain city services for future development. If the proposed territory is annexed, the city limits would completely surround a property at 2447 Robbins Lane Southeast and create an enclave, that enclave shown here in blue. In the future, the city could initiate annexation of that enclave. Annexations of enclaves must be presented to the voters for approval. The annexation territory is designated developing residential on the comprehensive plan map shown here in light green. Most of the adjacent properties are also designated developing residential. The subject property and adjacent properties in Marion County are zoned either Marion County Urban Transition 5 acres, here in a pale yellow color, or Urban Transition 10 acres in pink. Those are consistent with the developing residential designation. Nearby properties in the city are zoned RA Residential Agriculture, shown in light green, and RS Single Family Residential, shown in yellow. The territory will automatically be zoned City of Salem Residential Agriculture upon annexation. If it's subdivided after annexation, the zoning will change to Single Family Residential. Staff found the proposed annexation met the criteria for annexation, including whether it's consistent with comprehensive plan and statewide planning goals, allows services to be provided in an orderly, efficient, and timely manner, and serves the public In this 2016 aerial photo, we can see trees in the western and southern area of the subject property. On the east, you can see Brentwood Drive Southeast. It's an underdeveloped street, I would say, between the subject property and Interstate 5. Single-family dwellings are located to the west and the south in subdivisions, you know, some large acreage properties. The property that would potentially become an enclave includes some privately developed playing fields. We'll see better in the next slide. In the 2220 aerial photo, we can see that the trees were removed. The property owner completed a lawful logging operation from April through June 2018 with approval by the State Department of Forestry. And in this photo, you can see the athletic fields that are developed on private property. The Salem Tree Ordinance states that properties from which trees have been harvested in this manner may not be subdivided, partitioned, or developed as a planned unit development or for commercial use or activity for a period of five years following the completion of the timber harvest. That five-year period would end in June 2023. After the end of the five-year period, a subdivision could be created by recording a final subdivision plat. So tonight, we're presenting two options for council that are related to that five-year period. First would be to approve the annexation subject to conditions that would mitigate for the timber harvest. The applicants propose replanning with at least five species of trees that are two inches in caliper, which would exceed the minimum standard, which is 1.5 inches, to contribute $15,000 for city trees and enter into an agreement with the city, understanding that the city would not record a plat on or before July 1, 2023. If the annexation is approved with these conditions, and after the annexation becomes effective, the applicant may apply for land use approvals, such as the tentative plan for a subdivision. After the tentative plan for the subdivision is approved, and after public construction plans are approved, then the applicant would be able to begin site work that includes construction of utilities and streets. The actual subdividing of the land, which is the recording of the final plat, would be delayed until after the end of that five-year period. After the final plat's recorded, then building permits may be issued, then home construction may begin, and then trees would be replanted. The second option would be for council to approve the annexation but delay the effective date until the end of the five-year period. With this alternative, the applicant would not be required to provide the five species of trees that are larger than minimum caliper or contribute to that city tree fund. City staff's comments are included in the staff report. A few I wanted to point out are that Public Works determined that an urban growth area permit would be required prior to development, and at that time, we would outline the public improvements that would be required for future development, including streets and other utilities and their extensions. And the Parks Division determined that a neighborhood park would be required within this territory. We haven't received comments from South Gateway Neighborhood Association or Southeast Mill Creek Association across I-5. We did receive comments from the Marion County Assessor in support, commenting that annexation would bring consistency in services, market values, and tax rates in the area. Prior to 5:00 p.m. today, we tallied that 30 citizens had submitted testimony in support of the annexation, indicating that subdivision lots and houses are needed, that that development would bring jobs and strengthen the economy, and would also increase tax revenue for the city. We've received 32 public comments in opposition, and among those comments are that development should not be allowed within five years of the timber harvest, that the neighboring property owners and taxpayers have not had time due to the pandemic to decide whether they want to sell their properties, that additional mitigation such as a parkway should be required, other than only the increase in the caliper of the trees, that road improvement should be required with the annexation, and also that the potentially enclave property, the Johnson property at 2447 Robbins Lane, should not be forced to annex, and that roads should not be built through it. Under Senate Bill 1573 that was adopted in 2016, this annexation may not be referred to the voters because the owners signed the annexation petition. The territory is in the urban growth boundary, it's subject to the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan, and it's contiguous to city limits. Although the annexation may not be referred to the voters, council retains the authority on whether to annex the territory. Staff's recommendation would be that counselors find that the petitioners signed a valid petition, determine the annexation satisfies criteria, and adopt the order, apply the RA Residential Agriculture zoning, withdraw territory from Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District and Turner Fire District, and approve annexation subject to the conditions. And again, this is just restating the conditions we discussed earlier. If the annexation is approved with these conditions, after the annexation becomes effective, then the applicant may apply for the necessary land use approvals to complete the site work and public construction before the end of that five-year period. But again, the actual subdivision of the land, which is recording of the final plat, would not take place until the end of the five years. An alternative would be that council could delay the effective date of the annexation to July 1, 2023, but with this alternative, the applicant would not be required to provide the larger trees or contribute to the city's tree fund. That concludes the presentation. I'm available to answer questions or to go back to any of the slides if you need clarification. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Right, Alan Sorum, are you representing the applicant, Alan?
Yes, I am, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yes, for the record, my name is Alan Sorum. My office is at 250 Church Street, Southeast Salem, Oregon. Thank you very much, staff, counselors, for your time tonight. We appreciate it. We appreciate staff working with applicant team and providing a recommendation for approval of the proposal annexing the property. Tonight, I just would like to speak about some of the benefits, respond to some of the comments in the record, and, you know, highlight a little bit about why we think this is satisfying the criteria and ultimately in the best interest. So, you know, there were a number of letters. I appreciate planning staff going ahead and doing the count for me. A lot of those letters came in later. And the through line in much of those letters was the theme of addressing supply. You know, we have a housing shortage in the city of Salem right now, and that is not addressed in any, you know, short or fast fix. You have to put in the hard work, and ensuring that we have adequate land supply, not just in the urban growth boundary, but within the city of Salem limits, is critical to meet that both current and long-term need for buildable land and residential housing of all types. There were also additional comments just about the process as a whole. You know, we do expect to, as Oregonians, you know, we've had urban growth boundaries for fifty years now. So we understand that development needs to occur within urban growth boundaries. But the other side of that coin is we need to ensure that we have timely and predictable annexations and understanding that they are truly in the best interest and that properties inside the urban growth boundary, particularly properties that are immediately adjacent to the Salem City Limits, should not be kept out of the city and put on the sidelines. That would be inconsistent with the statewide land use planning goals and overall scheme. The additional comments from the Home Builder Association noted, you know, that kind of part of the Salem Futures Project is the growing emphasis on environmental impacts from our land use planning. And, you know, sometimes people would like to think any approval would be necessarily in for a land use decision would be more development, which would be bad for the environment. But we would like the council to consider that actually when we're talking about annexation of developable land, this is in favor of, you know, being environmental stewardship and ensuring that we are mitigating our environmental impacts because individuals are coming to the Lamont Valley and the city of Salem is our primary employment center. What we can do to mitigate and lower vehicle travel miles is in the best interest of mitigating any kind of impacts. And so ensuring that we've got an adequate supply of land for houses in Salem City Limits as opposed to Staton, Subliminy, Dallas, Silverton and the surrounding communities, where we've seen a huge uptick in development over the last three years as available land supply has come down, actually having that benefit in reducing vehicle miles traveled. Staff noted that in their report, they identified a couple of conditions of approval, like two alternatives. It's applicant, it was applicant's expectation that we would be talking about just the first package, but it's in any event, it's our strong preference for option number one. We, as was noted, there was a harvest of merchant bull timber on the subject property that was completed in two thousand eighteen. It was done pursuant to all the Department of Forests Street permits. And Salem City Staff took the position that the Tree Ordinance Moratorium Regarding Subdivisions applied. We disagreed as to that text amendment, but where, or excuse me, that text interpretation, but where staff and applicant do agree is that the language of the Tree Ordinance talks about subdivision, partition or commercial development. Only residential land development would be a lot of the zoning. And that action is one of recording a final plat. So, you know, if the Tree Ordinance, the kind of the original legislative intent in adopting that was to prohibit annexation, that language could have been put in there. And, you know, and if it expressly prohibited annexation in that regard, it would have eliminated a lot of initial, you know, debate about the meaning of the code, but it clearly doesn't. It has decisions. So what we've agreed to is that we would request the annexation as a petitioner-initiated annexation, subject to the conditions where the final plat would not be allowed to be recorded until July of twenty twenty-three, which would ensure that there's been five years prior to the completion of the harvest. And in our instance, there's no issue with the Tree Ordinance. We don't, you know, we wanted to provide a proposal that demonstrates our interest in going above and beyond what's required in the code. So there's a couple of conditions of approval that the applicant has proposed in order to demonstrate its interest in providing to the community and ensuring the tree planning will occur. The public benefit of planning some additional bumping up the caliper from one point five to two inches actually adds quite a bit of height to the proposed trees. That's a measure of the diameter of the tree, but it does have a significant impact on the age of the tree. And we also are offering up to increase the diversity of the trees that will be allowed. And as the property is developed, you know, these trees are going to be much more likely to grow in an environment that is the new urban environment and thrive. What we often see when we have trees that were annexed in or brought into development and were trying to be retained and they were grown in an environment like you saw on the aerial photo from two thousand sixteen. You know, that wasn't like oak savanna where the trees kind of grew up, spread out. Those trees were planted for timber and in a close environment. So they're not really well-suited to handle winds and the kind of stresses that would put on development. So they wouldn't necessarily have survived very well. So, you know, we want to go ahead and provide those additional public benefits, happy to do so. We feel that we've addressed the topic of tree preservation well in here. There were a number of comments. I think I'll just, the one I'll speak to just right now is, you know, this application is not about an enclave application. You know, this is just a petitioner-initiated annexation for the B C Salem property, the applicant in this case. So we're not asking council to take a position on anyone else's property. There's no proposal applicant for any development concurrent with this. And, you know, we have no desires for condemnation or anything like that on anybody else's property. So there were a lot of comments in the record that kind of misunderstood, I believe, what was before city council tonight, what was being asked. So we have any concerns or, you know, any desire or anything to control anyone else's property. We're just here trying to move forward with the development process on property that has been identified for future development and make that happen for the community. So there are with me tonight two individuals. Mark Renz, who is a professional civil engineer of the engineering firm Multitec Engineering. John Elb, John is with the ownership group for the property. If there's specific questions regarding engineering, you know, whether or not there's public facilities that you would like to ask our engineer or the property owner in particular, they're here to answer those questions. Otherwise, I can reserve my time for rebuttal and I'm very happy to answer any questions from city counselors tonight, if there are any.
You're on mute, Mr. Mayor.
There we go. Thank you, Mr. Sorum. Are there any questions for Mr. Sorum? Counselor Anderson, you look pretty.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure you could see me, Mr. Mayor.
I saw you.
Okay. Thanks for your presentation, Mr. Sorum. My question relates to how did you arrive at the fifteen thousand dollar figure for the trees? I don't know if that's a big figure, a lot of money or hardly any money. So how did you come up with that? And I'll ask the staff that too when the staff comes up here.
So my understanding is that that number was trying to have a rough approximation as to a cost of how many trees to be planted. So I think there was a certain goal for how many trees to be planted in the city's facility. So I think staff kind of worked back from that target as to an identified goal of trees to be planted. And then how much do trees cost? And we got there. I don't remember or was really too much a part of those discussions as to what number of trees we were looking for.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a similar question to Counselor Anderson's, and that's on the tree diameter. How did you, how did you come to that, that specific upgrade, so to speak, on tree diameter?
I'll let Mr. Grenson speak if he knows, but I believe that was, again, the product of discussion from staff and applicant team. Mr. Grens or Mr. El, do you, are you able to answer Mr. Counselor Hoy's question on?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna sign, I'm gonna sign Mr. Grens up for public, public testimony then, okay? He's not on my list. So, Mr. Grens, are you the answerer here?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, so the staff, the applicant and and staff worked together to come up with what would be considered a considerable upgrade. And as you know, to go from a one and a half inch caliber tree to a two-inch caliber tree is a very significant increase in the size, both from survival as well as height of the tree that would come in. So instead of having trees, an inch and a half caliber tree that's in that that three and a half to five and a half foot range, now you're gonna, depending on the species you pick here with a two-inch caliper, now you're gonna have a tree that has a minimum height of four feet. And a lot of those trees, you're gonna have heights that are well over six, six and a half feet. So that was the intention was to try to provide a trade-off for the loss of trees that someone might believe should have, should have still been there had we not removed those trees and gone through the, to the process that the city has in the tree ordinance. And we'd have been allowed to remove seventy-five percent of the trees, keep twenty-five percent. So it was that type of an analysis that was gone through to get there.
Okay. Okay. Counselor Leong, did I see your hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my question has to do with, again, trees. Specifically, the proposal states that you're gonna provide five different types of trees. Why did you decide on five different types of trees according to the lists that was provided to you from the staff?
The intent was to try to, was to provide the staff with a list of trees that provided a variety of trees that were, that were from the city's tree list and that were urban trees that we could plant and that we could have a variety of urban trees within the development as opposed to picking one single type. And then, and then also to make sure that we had a, that we had an opportunity to create a an urban environment that's more, that's more desirable overall.
Thank you. To follow up on that question, so as we've seen repeatedly in city council meetings, like we do need trees, but we also need trees that are diverse and they're not all the same. At one of our last, our Salem presentations, there was a discussion about tree canopy that included the need for having diverse trees. So the five trees, the species that you selected, are they within, I don't know if you know offhand from the, from the R Salem report, are they those trees that we have too much of? Or are they more of the other trees that we need more of?
I'll have to pause. I'm not a landscape designer, so I don't, I don't know that much about the trees. I know that we, that the applicant worked with their landscape consultant to come up with, to pick the trees that they felt would be, that would be readily available to get into development from the two-inch caliper as opposed to, you know, you can pick a tree, it's a really nice tree, but then you can't find it because it's not available in the size that you want. And so that's, so they did, they worked together in that to try to come up with a combination of trees that they knew they could get, that they could get in the two-inch diameter caliper that would fit in there. I believe they're from, they're from the city's tree list, so I think they're, it's for street trees. So I think they're intended to be trees that create, create a good tree canopy.
Counselor Leong, just speaking to your question too, a little bit, that the language of the condition states that diversity shall be increased by planning not less five species authorized by the city's tree the city's tree and vegetation technical manual. So it's coming, we don't have anything specifically proposed and we don't have a specific development plan, you know, yet. There obviously has been some discussions with staff as to, you know, that look like and what that would be. But there haven't been purchases and the structure of it is to tie it back into the city's tree and vegetation technical manual. How much that overlaps with the report that you were referring to? I don't know, I'm not familiar with that report, but certainly if there are trees that we have too much in the city, you know, maybe updating the manual is something that could be looked at.
Counselor Nordike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I appreciate the applicant's proposal to provide the fifteen thousand for trees. And I see from materials that the intention is to spend that fifteen thousand on trees in the area. So that's good. And that certainly raises my expectations for what other applicants who are interested in annexation, what they can do to demonstrate some sort of way to mitigate the impact from their proposal. I would just encourage, depending on the outcome of how this annexation goes, to work with the urban forester. Because I've talked with him a number of times and he's really good at identifying what kinds of trees are the best kind, the ones that will thrive in that environment, the ones that will provide good shade, good tree canopy, the ones that perhaps can survive an ice storm better than the big oaks in my backyard did, maybe. So I would just encourage folks to work with the urban forester to help in the selection of suitable trees.
Okay.
So I had a couple other questions.
A question, okay.
Yeah, I do. So for, I saw in the public, some of the public works comments that the proposed annexation is unserved by a city park. And it shows that the nearest neighborhood park is West Bennett, which is outside the half-mile service area of the park. So according to our city staff, the proposal, the annexation is unserved by a park and is, and is needed in this area in the comprehensive park system master plan. So my question then would be, this is forty-one plus acres that is the subject of the annexation. Does that include room for a park? Is it for multifamily housing? Because is it for any portionment, is it for affordable housing while we're on the subject? Because we do need more density, we do need more parks, but we desperately, desperately need more affordable housing in this area. And I'm curious, is it too early to forecast what you intend on using these forty-one acres for?
So I'll speak to the process question on that, Mr. Grenz, if there's something you can add, please signal. But so right now, we're just doing an annexation. We're not proposing this concurrent with the U G A request, land division or other type of development. Naturally, we're looking at single-family residential development as currently the highest and best use and the likely development, you know, opportunities in the next eighteen months. But, you know, that, so that's, that's to try to answer your question there. On the park issue, that will be addressed specifically in the U G A application. So that's the urban growth area and we are outside of the urban growth services area and chapter, I believe it's two hundred, if Minister Davis or Fernandez is on here, they can correct me if I misspeak. But in, in that portion of the code, that's where you'll find the standard that was identified in the public works memo. So we will get there and there likely will be a comment from the public works as part of their review of the U G A that there needs to be either a donation, you know, dedication of land or the acquisition of real estate by the city or a proportionate share obligation, some type of tool to address the fact that we're outside of that half-mile radius from the current, from the closest neighborhood park.
That'll all be a topic though in a couple of years, right? When I actually see your partition, I'm feeling like we're having a hearing on your partition and that's not what this is about. It's about your annexation.
Yeah, we're hoping, we're hoping to be able to get this annexation decision and then come in, file that application for subdivision in U G A. And but we will not be able to record any plats or do any.
Yeah, and I kind of, I really would discourage discussion of your plat. That's not what we're talking about tonight. That, I think you're jumping way ahead of the horse here. Counselor Nordike.
Sure, one final question. So I think I saw in the materials, there was no input from the. Sure, one final question. So I think I saw in the materials, there was no input from the neighborhood association in question. Did the applicant make any effort to reach out to the South Gateway Neighborhood Association?
Yes, Mr. Grenz and, and a representative from the, the applicant team testified there on a, on the April eighth meeting. So that, we, we, we did make a presentation to the neighborhood association at that time.
Okay, and did we hear anything from them or, I mean, I, it says there's no comment provided by them. And I'm just curious if you got any feedback from the neighborhood association at the time.
Ms. Grenz?
I'm probably, I'm probably best suited to answer that. So we, we had a, we had a good discussion with the neighborhood association that evening. There was, I believe there was probably five or six people that were in attendance on that, that Zoom meeting that provided a comment back to us and this discussion about that, about the annexation. We didn't have anybody at that meeting who, who was specifically opposed to the annexation. Each one had different types of concerns. Some was about traffic. Some was about park. Some expressed the need for the property to be developed so that the, there were better street extensions, both north, south and east, west through this part of town from Robbins Lane area. But we didn't, we didn't get, we didn't get anything negative. There's a lot of questions about what type of development it would be. And we assured them that it was intended to be a single family in nature. And that we, we did know that Public Works was looking for a park in this area and that we would be, that we'd be working with Public Works in order to get that done.
Great, thank you. Any, any further questions? Secretary Counselor Hoy, oh no, I've got.
Counselor Leong has a hand up, Mr. Mayor.
Who does?
I do, I do too, please.
Oh, okay. Okay, Counselor Leong.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I was waving at you trying to get your attention.
Sorry, I missed it. I, I asked and I didn't see anybody move, so.
I have a question. I'm not sure if it's for Mr. Sorem or if it's for city staff. And it's specifically, you were, Mr. Sorem, you were talking about the UGAs. Are you talking, so if the city council decided to move forward with the staff recommendation within that timeframe, all the way until July first, would you be working and then submitting a UGA prior to July first, twenty twenty-three? Or would that be submitted after July first, twenty twenty-three?
Our goal is to submit application for a UGA approval and a tentative plan. We want to be, you know, forthright with what our goals are. So that, that is our hope and that is our goal. And that's kind of how section, the, the, the conditions of approval under the proposal would, would work in my opinion. But we will not be subdividing the property until the plat is recorded. So there's, I, I think that's how we address the, the, the code criterion.
Okay, because I guess where I'm going with this is because we have people who may not understand some of the land use languages that we're using. I want to make sure that people who are watching, especially the, the people in the area who are being infected, understand what exactly is being said. So I'm talking specifically about page five of nine of the file report that was sent to us from city staff. The la, the, under the item number seven, applicant's request, the last two sentences in the first paragraph. With approval of an annexation, the applicant would be able to apply for the necessary land use approvals and complete site work and public construction prior to the end of the five year period. However, the actual subdividing of the land, parentheses, the final plat, would not take place until the end of the five year period. So the questions that I would have, especially if I didn't understand this and I went to law school and understand what this is, but I know that there's people who don't. So the question is, what does necessary land use approval mean? What does complete site work and public construction mean, especially prior to that five year period? And then the second question is, what does subdividing the final plat actually mean?
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll, I'll answer the second one first, if I may.
Yeah.
So subdividing is, is defined in, in chapter ninety-two of the Oregon Revised Statutes. That's the statute, the laws that govern partitions and, and subdivisions. And, and that's the recording of the final plat. So that is a Mylar. It's a document that gets reviewed both by the City of Salem staff. And then once it's approved, it goes to the county recorder's office to make sure that it complies with all survey laws and, and Oregon Revised Statute, Chapter ninety-two, the, those subdivisions. And only then, after it's approved by the, the county surveyor and duly signed off by the county commissioners and, and the taxes have been paid and those, that final plat process is, is completed, are you allowed to record the plat? And that'll, it, that is the document that lets you go ahead and sell a lot to another person. Before then, you cannot legally sell any portion of that property until the plat has been recorded. That's, that is the act of the land division. So the other elements that you asked about are, are really a lot of the other things that go into that. The very first step would be to get a land use approval. So there will be another notice of the proposed application. We'll have to, to submit it, an application that demonstrates that we've completed the tentative plan and, and demonstrated that we have all the adequate public facilities that are needed. And we also, in the City of Salem, which is unique to Salem, is there's an urban growth area permit request that you have to do to kind of demonstrate that there's either existing public facilities in the region or, or, or your engineering team have gone ahead and created a plan to bring those public facilities to the subject property so it can be used for the proposed use. Once you have a tentative plan approved, that's what we commonly call the land use decision. It has a number of conditions, items that need to be create, completed for final plat can be recorded. So often you get into doing the, some of the onsite civil work, creating the rights. So if, if we have to improve Robbins Lane or, or some of the, the other roads, we have to, you know, provide sanitary sewer pipes or water pipes, we can go ahead and get, we, we would get whole permits once we've completed the design and try to get that from the City of Salem prior to or, you know, with the final plat. So there's a lot of moving parts that happen with all of that. But the, the end result or, or the, the, the final thing is, is the recording of the plat. Until that's done, we cannot sell the property to anyone else and the land has not been divided. So that, that, I don't want to do like a twenty minute thing, but like that is, you know, trying to talk about a little bit. The, you know, what are we talking about with the land use applications that need to be completed still? You know, there'll be a public pro, for, and then also you asked about, well, what is this, you know, civil work and where are these other permits? That, that, that's what it's doing is, is doing some grading, doing the work related to constructing those public facilities. A lot of work has to be done before you can complete your, your final plat.
Great. Probably apply for a CLE on this one. Jim Lewis?
Yes, I got a question for Mr. Grenz and I'm sorry to dwell into this, but it's important to me. As you, with your experience in this type of thing, as you look at the configuration of this property in the back of your napkin, how many houses could you put in?
Approach that, so we would, we would expect that, that this property, without consideration of a park, this property could support somewhere in the area of around a hundred and ninety single family residences. With consideration for a park, if there was a neighborhood park that was in the four to five acre range, then, then you'd be looking closer into, to the one fifty to one sixty single family residences.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That's a nap.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Phillips?
So I think, I appreciate all the.
Is that you and Lewis? Were you trying to, did you have another question? Just a sec, Trevor, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead, Trevor, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett and everybody on here tonight. The comments and questions that have come before have helped me understand this. So for at least myself and a couple others, this is our first annexation hearing. So there are a lot of concepts that are brand new. What I'm hearing is that this is just the annexation decision, but that there are sort of built into the staff recommendation requirements that would, you know, compel the planting of the two inch diameter trees and the quantity of trees. Is that determined by the fifteen thousand dollar amount? That's my first question.
Mr. Grenz, how many trees are you getting for fifteen thousand?
So depending on, depending on the price that you establish for the trees. But if you, if, if you were to presume that there, that there were approximately four hundred trees on the site that were removed through the, through the timber removal and that we would be, that we would have been required to retain twenty-five percent, that's a hundred trees. And if you went out and purchased a hundred, a tree for a hundred and fifty dollars per tree and then replaced that and then equated that value, that's the fifteen thousand. That fifteen thousand dollars would be played, would be paid to the city to, for the, for the tree fund. It could be used on this, in this development or it could be used by a city in some other place.
Okay.
So for, for those of us that are new, how does that process work in terms of like the city staff working with you guys that are making this request? Like what if I wanted more trees? Like hypothetically, I wanted twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars worth of trees. How do we like know that this is like the best deal we can get or could we theoretically ask for five thousand more? I mean, how, how does that work? So you can answer that question. I have one more question about the park.
Let's, Mr. Anderson answer that one.
Might be a better question, Counselor Phillips asked staff, but.
A staff, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll get a determination on how that, because that is confusing. How to, where's, what's it mean? And what if you want more? It is difficult. You can get more if you want smaller trees, apparently. That seemed to be all I've heard so far. Okay. Is, do you have any more, Counselor Phillips?
Yes.
Get that with the staff.
Yeah, we'll answer. Okay, thank you. And then my last question has to do with the park. I understand, or I'm starting to understand that this is just the annexation. So there's not any decision that's happening about a park tonight. But it was, it came through in the slideshow, the PowerPoint, that that's in need. So I, my question is, is, is that going to be put off until we do the subdivision? And, and do we know with some certainty that there's a high probability of a park at that time? I mean, I, I get that it's not related to the annexation, but since it was identified as a need, we just want to make sure that, you know, those, those needs are met. Like what kind of assurances do we have?
Mr. Anderson, do we have anything in the law that guarantees us a park? What's the?
Again, an excellent question and that may be a better question for staff for Public Works and planning when we get to that point of the, of the proceeding.
Okay, Ms. Soren, did you wanna?
No.
Okay, very good. Well, we'll go to, we'll wait for staff then on that one. Two, so I'll call on you first when we get Pamela back up. Virginia, did you have questions? Okay. Anybody else? Yes, Counselor Anders.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question relates to, I think, Mr. Grenz and it's the fifteen thousand dollars, not the amount, but what I heard you say was you give the city fifteen thousand dollars and the city can use that any place they want. And that, I guess that means to me that there's nothing in this plan that says you have to plant some of the trees. Because if you had four hundred trees and you could, under the city, you could only remove seventy-five percent of them, you'd still have a hundred trees there. So this, under this proposed annexation, you don't have to plant any trees.
The, the, my understanding of what, what was being asked was for us to come up with a contribution, a basis for a contribution that would be paid to the city's tree fund so that the tree fund could be utilized in a way that was most, most beneficial to the community. If it's determined that, that rather than, than to pay the money that we are to plant the trees, we would be happy to take that position as well. So we, we don't, without, without having a land use process further down the road where you, where you know what size park you're dealing with and what kinds of improvements the parks, people are gonna want to be in the park. You don't know whether you want to plant fifty trees or a hundred trees or maybe not hardly any trees in the park, but that part, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Grenz, but I would presume that if you're trying to market this piece of property, you're not gonna want to market it with total bare earth and no trees that is part of the development in the future. Again, we're only talking about annexation now, but as part of the development in the future, in order to sell it, you're gonna want to plant trees around.
Counselor Hoy?
So there are.
Mr. Grenz, just a sec. Let me let Hoy take this one on.
So just to clarify, the way I understand this is we're talking about trees related to this annexation. In the future, if we would decided to allow this annexation and you decided to go forward with the plating, you would be required to plant a tree on every lot because that's what we require. So that's a total separate conversation. So they would be planting trees related to the plating, but not related to the annexation. But the city has fifteen thousand dollars that we could choose to use at this subdivision or at another area nearby, separate from each of the individual trees on each of those individual lots. Am I correct there?
That's correct.
Very good explanation. Thank you, Counselor Hoy. I, I, I I don't have any more questions on that.
Okay, great.
Very good. Yeah.
Counselor Leong?
Um, I just wanted to clarify one piece though about where the trees could be planted if we're talking trees for a moment. So if you're looking at page six of the document, it says specifically, the funds will be used to provide for additional city trees in the vicinity of the subject property. So does that mean it's only going to be at the property or near the property and can't just be spent, let's say, at another area where that needs trees?
Again, that might be a better question for.
Question for staff. It really would. I think what they're saying is that they want to be sure they're gonna have fifteen thousand bucks worth of trees planted in their plat at some future date, that it, that's where it's going. I don't know. Let's, let's let Pamela clarify that.
And I also had one additional.
Yep, go ahead.
Sorry. I had one additional question just to clarify. So for the necessary land use approvals, that process, that will, when it gets there, that will come eventually to city, to the planning committee first and whatever the planning committee decides upon, then it'll be sent to city council. Then the city council will then be the one to decide if we agree with the planning committee, if we want to modify the planning committee or we want to reject the planning committee's decision.
That would be up to the council if you want to take up, I assume, to take that up. Is that right, Mr. Anderson? The planning commission can act and then the council decides where they want to take it up?
Correct. So at the time of a subdivision application, it will be subject.
Let's just assume most everybody that's here will be here in two years or at least some variation on what we're looking at here. And it'll, it'll probably be real interesting to hear people talk about it at that time. Okay? Any other questions? Okay, Pamela, you've got a couple of questions we need to ask you. Oh, no, Mr. Eld, did you want to speak?
Mayor, I believe Mr. Sorem took up all of the applicant's ten minutes, I think, except for about twenty seconds. So he would have about twenty seconds.
Say your name, Mr. Eld?
Sure. My name's John Eld. I work for Bonnimenture here at three, four, two, five Boone Road in Salem. Just want to thank staff for working with us on this. It's been a lot of work and, and it will be continuing going forward. So just appreciate everything that the city's work done with us so far, so.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, and then I have Cole Johnson.
Hey, guys.
There he is. Hi.
I'm here. Thank you so much for letting me chime in. I am the owner of the, what looks like the future enclave or proposed enclave. So my wife and I had that five acre plot that the residence is two, four, four, seven Robbins Lane and the, the property is contiguous with the, the clear cut that was done in two thousand and eighteen and the proposed new land development. So the north side and the, and the east border of my five acre property is directly adjacent to the landing question. So I know that I have much time and you guys have talked about all the pertinent points. And so without going into great detail about how that, the clear cut was handled, just know that the, the four hundred trees that were fell, there were sixty, sixty-five of those huge great white oaks, right, which are, we're not talking two inch diameter, we're talking two, three feet diameter, which take, you know, like fifty to a hundred years to, to grow. So if we're replacing those, so once, once all that happened and all the dust and the flooding and the, the wildlife and the deer on our turf field trying to eat the turf, it's been sad to watch. And I understand that this, this annexation probably will happen. I understand, I'm not, I know that Salem needs housing. It needs affordable housing and I'm actually for that. And so I'm not completely bummed by the annexation of the property, but obviously if you guys were in our shoes, you would be nervous about having your property be an enclave in, you know, and, and, and face forced annexation and then certain parts of your property becoming eminent domain. I know you guys can empathize with that. So I just wanted to say that I. So I just wanted to say that I, um, the purpose of me commenting is to, to just please, I mean, require, it would be nice if you required the owners and developers of the land to exhibit the, the patience that we have shown towards them. Not just when they accidentally cut down five of my trees, which cost well over fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Each, each one, each time you cut down a white oak, they're selling them for, for fifteen hundred dollars, I mean, or more. So with these, these accidental cutting down of my trees and then at the end, then laying a few logs in my yard and saying, hey, well, we'll give them back to you, you can use them for firewood. I mean, I've since then spent thirty thousand dollars lining my property with trees, because I knew that this was coming, right? So I just want you guys to do your research and I would plead with you to check into it. Fifteen thousand dollars towards the tree fund is simply not enough. And because they can get annexation anytime, I know, I know that, um, Mr. Soren pointed out that it doesn't say that they have to wait the five years to annex. And so, but they, there's a reason why you have to have a petition. It's because it's not a foregone conclusion. But I would humbly ask on behalf of all my neighbors and my wife and my kids and all the wildlife that were displaced and all the flooding from the wetlands that have piled in since all that, all the shrubbery was, like, please ask them to exhibit as much patience with the process as we have with the process.
Great.
Because you can't, you can't ask to be double.
Cole, I'm afraid your time's up. Thank you very much. Really appreciate you coming. Does anyone have any questions for, for Mr. Johnson? Yes, Counselor Phillips. We need to unmute. Everybody.
Sorry, guys, I, I almost did it. I'll do without that. But anyway, thank you, Mr. Johnson, for testifying tonight. Uh, I have a question. I'm trying to understand, uh, what you mean by patience. So it's my understanding that the city could, uh, if we could not approve, but if we do approve, we can have them wait to subdevelop until two thousand and twenty-three, or we can allow them to move forward more quickly, um, in terms of, and then have the requirement that they have to put in some trees. Which one of those is your preference? It's fine not to answer, but that would be my question.
Well, my preference would be, as far as patience, I'm just speaking to, in terms of during, during the site work or during the falling of the trees and all that stuff. I mean, it was, it was a huge, I mean, not to be, I mean, it was, it was an inconvenience. And to know that they can still do site work leading up to, I mean, subdividing the property is different than like prepping the work. And so just knowing that there is going to be more machinery and dust and more displacement of, I mean, things have grown, grown back its organs, so things grow quickly. The, the prospect of that, I would love to kick that down the road as much as possible, because the thirty thousand dollars worth of trees that I planted along, they can get tall over the next two years, way taller than, you know, the two and a half or two inch diameter trees that they will eventually plan, plant in, you know, as they subdivide the property. So I would prefer to just push it out. But if you do decide as a council to, to annex the property now, I understand that. But I would require, um, a little bit more from them to make it worth our while. I mean, fifteen thousand dollars is nothing and increasing the diameter of trees, that's noble. But there is, we are in a position where we should ask for more for, because forty acres amounting to four hundred trees and the age of those trees and the white oaks, which were cut down in a, I believe, in a spurious and dubious manner. Um, and they weren't forthcoming about how they were doing it when they were applying for the permits. Um, to me, there should be a little bit more on the table. And they don't need to consent to a future park, but we, we know we can't, um, require them anything right now. This is just an annexation. But I would ask, I would ask the council this, consider that.
Okay, yeah, well, hopefully you'll be back in the future. You'll be, it sounds like you're planning on being around for quite a while, so.
Yeah, we hope so.
Council will see you in a couple of years, which would be good. Okay.
Thank you. We're signing off.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. Now Pamela, where are you? There you are. Okay, we have some questions for you. I will start with Counselor Phillips. He had a couple that I think really run to the heart here.
Yeah, uh, thank you. So, uh, Pimco, thanks for being here. My question had to do with the trees and, uh, how you came to that fifteen thousand dollar amount and kinda what that gets us. And is there room now within the criteria to ask for more? Um, you know, what's the real world impact of fifteen thousand dollars to the tree fund?
That number was arrived at with consultation from Public Works and Parks Division. So if Peter Fernandez is here or Glenn Davis, I think they'd have a little more background on how they arrived at that number.
Good evening, Peter Fernandez, Public Works, uh, Director. I have no idea how the staff arrived at that number, so, uh, we, we can bring that information back to you. I have no idea.
Hi, this is Lisa Anderson Olgoby, your planning administrator. I will just, uh, chime in that it, the applicant arrived at that number. We said you need to propose something and, and we think planting more trees, bigger trees, might be something to mitigate onsite. And then perhaps the tree fund, and that's the dollar amount that they brought back. And we presented it for our park staff who said, great, we can do something with fifteen thousand dollars. Um, I'm not sure that we asked park staff to weigh in on if that was an appropriate amount. They just said that would be a great amount for the tree fund and there's, there's great things we can do. And I wanna clarify, I think, I think it was clarified by Counselor Hoy earlier, but, um, all of the lots, when they're, when the houses are built, they will have to plant a minimum two and up to six trees depending, and that's separate from the money. So the applicant will be paying for their own trees. And those are the trees that would be larger and would be the wider variety. Um, the tree fund money could potentially be used in a new park. But, um, you know, if the city purchases land for a park, it's, it's unclear on the timing of when the park would be developed. And that's why the report says the, the money would just be used in the general vicinity, because we don't wanna commit to holding on to that money for the future park if it can maybe be used elsewhere on a different project that comes before the park is ready.
So, uh, Lisa, is the, is the ultimate outcome of the tree question going to occur in the plating of the subdivision or the partitioning or whatever is gonna be coming in two years? Is that really where that kind of issue will come up? I, I mean, the density of it, not the, you see what I'm saying?
Well, the, the money and the trees that would be planted with that money is, will be unrelated to a future subdivision. The future subdivision will require a certain amount of trees, street trees and private property trees. The money, when the applicant pays it, can be used by park staff at any time on any project that they deem appropriate, that they need to use the money to plant city trees in, in this future park or in some other park we already own or future street trees somewhere else in the city. So that would just be whenever, um, they have a, a worthy project that, that needs the trees.
So we're not, we're not in any way limited by the, the fifteen thousand dollars. That's sort of a, you know, a penalty for the, uh, for the logging.
It is, that is, that is the applicant's proposal to, to mitigate, um.
Mitigate, I'm sorry, mitigation, I didn't mean to say penalty.
I, I don't wanna say that you're not limited and you can ask for unlimited funds, uh, you know, it needs to be related. And at some point, if, if the council decides to ask for too much, I think the applicant would just decide to wait the two years. So I'm sure there's some tipping point. I don't know what that is. The fifteen thousand was proposed by the applicant. And, and like I said, park staff felt that they could purchase a lot of trees and plant a lot of trees with fifteen thousand. And it's really up to the council if, if you think that's an appropriate amount or not.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if you can answer this, uh, Ms. Anderson Olgoby, but was the applicant the owner of the property when they did, when the logging was done? In other words, who bet, yes? So the applicant had the property, they went to the state, they could cut all four hundred trees. And now they're coming to us and saying they'll pay fifteen hundred dollars or fifteen thousand dollars for the hundred trees that they wouldn't have been allowed to cut if, if they were trying to do this through the city as opposed to the state.
Correct. And so that's why the alternative would be to just not take any of the mitigation and wait till twenty, July of two thousand and twenty-three.
Sure, sure.
For the, for the annexation.
Yeah, I understand that. That's part of the whole negotiation process. So it doesn't sound like there was much in negotiation, because they made an offer and you guys said, I understand why. The park said, sure, you know, fifteen thousand dollars for trees, sounds like a good deal. As opposed to saying, we'd like thirty thousand, you know, and, and some negotiation on the amount. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Are there other questions? Counselor Leon?
Um, this is maybe more of a comment slash question, um, whoever its category is at this point. So if we're going by what, uh, Mr. Johnson had said specifically about there being at least sixty white oaks that were removed from that property. And let's just say the white oaks, by selling the law, the lumber as is, was about fifteen thousand dollars each. That would have been nine hundred thousand dollars worth of lumber that pretty much was sold. So that, that's what we're talking about. We're only talking about one white oak tree equivalent with the fifteen thousand dollars. I just wanted to bring that out there.
Counselor Hoy or Mayor, then I just wanna remind council that this is a land, quasi judicial land use proceeding. It's subject to certain criteria, so you have discretion within that criteria. These, this offer of the fifteen thousand is meant to address the issue of cutting the trees. But frankly, they cut the trees consistent with state law and consistent with our code. So as, uh, Anderson, Lisa Anderson Olgoby has already stated, the options are basically you can ask them for more. And if they, they don't wanna pay more, they're not obligated to. And our options are to, you know, if we have grounds to deny an annexation, we can do that. But it's gotta be based on criteria, not because they haven't paid enough money to satisfy this concern.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure who on staff answers this, but, and maybe I'm thinking of something else. But I think I remember reading that there was a development proposal on this property in two thousand and seventeen. Can somebody address that with me?
Application conference.
Excuse me?
It was a pre-application conference.
So what was the purpose of the application?
A pre-application conference is required before an annexation. So that was one of the topics discussed. And it was just a preliminary look at what a potential subdivision plan might look.
And in that, and in that, uh, potential subdivision plan, what was the number of houses that were gonna be built?
I don't recall. I didn't actually do that part of the pre-app. We have, um, I've seen it, I've looked at it, but I can't recall a number of lots.
Okay, not even a ballpark figure?
I think it was about one eighty. I did look at it this afternoon. I think it was about a hundred and eighty.
So similar to what the number is that we've had in the staff report, which before we started talking about having a park, they were estimating a hundred and ninety to two hundred single family lots. And Mr. Grin said that if they did do the park, that it would be less, it would probably be a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty if the park was taken out of that territory.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis, do you have any other questions on that?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. Any, any other questions for staff?
I mean, I, I think I still had my second question, which was.
Go ahead.
Uh, I, I understand this is the annexation and it's different than when we actually do the subdivision. But this area doesn't have, uh, like it's not serviced by a park. So what is the probability that a park would be put here? Uh, and how does that, you know, how do those of, that of us are new, how do we understand this? Help us understand this.
Thank you.
The Public Works Department and Parks Division look at that together. So the Public Works Department said that an urban growth area preliminary declaration or permit is required. And as part of that, they talk about which utilities are required and whether parks are required. And they determined that a neighborhood park is required in this area. So that's how we're going to get there. So if the annexation's approved and they apply for the urban growth area permit, then we would tell them, hey, you have to provide either the park or if it's possible to provide a fee in lieu. That's how we would get there. And then that would be required as a condition.
And that will be in the future.
Pardon?
Thank you, Ms. Cole. I'll turn it back over to the mayor then.
And that, then Ms. Cole will be decided in the future.
Yes, definitely, in the future. And, and we're talking months before the annexation would be effective if we have an approval. We have to come back with first reading, second reading.
Right.
And then there's a delay before the ordinance is effective. Then there's a delay before the Secretary of State signs off and it's actually an effective annexation. So we could be talking several months down the road.
Great.
Summer, even fall. And then, then the applications are reviewed and that goes through the usual land division process with notice to the public, the neighborhood association, surrounding property owners and residents within two hundred and fifty feet of the property. Subdivisions are posted on the property as well. So people going by can see that the application's in and there would be opportunities to comment.
Counselor Phillips, any, any further? Are you satisfied on that?
On, on the park, I am.
Okay.
I'm interested in what Counselor, uh, Anderson has to say. I might have another question on the trees.
Okay, well, let's see if he prompts another question. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and I, I'm not sure whether this is for the city attorney or for somebody, Ms. Cole or Ms. Anderson Olgoby. So we've got, we've got two proposed, two recommendations here. One is approve it with the, the conditions of the fifteen thousand dollars and everything else. One is just allow it to sit for a while and then they'll come back in two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, that's more or less it. But I just don't quite understand if we could say, for example, we'll approve it, but instead of fifteen thousand, we want twenty-five thousand dollars, we want thirty thousand dollars. In effect, we're kinda negotiating with the developers right now. And theoretically, if they say we only want to give fifteen thousand, that's it, then they can just withdraw the application and come back in two thousand and twenty-three.
Look, if I can take a stab at that.
Yeah.
So, Counselor, they can, you know, they can do that or they can say, no, we want you to approve us um, without any financial compensation for these trees. This is a, this is an offer they have made to us to address the fact that they cut these trees down. These trees are not part of the criteria. So if they don't want to do that, they don't have to. And we still have to make this decision based on the criteria for annexations.
Yeah, no.
You can certainly have that discussion with them and you can have that discussion with them right now when they come up for rebuttal. If, you know, fifteen thousand dollars doesn't feel adequate to counsel, are you able to do, uh, to, to do something better?
Okay, okay, yeah. Uh, I, I, I'm putting, uh, the folks on notice. I think I would like to have, uh, them respond to that in some way or shape or form. Thanks, thanks very much. Been hopeful.
Yeah, so Tom, uh, did a great job of asking that question. And that, that was in part my question, but I thought I understood this and now I'm a bit confused. So like, I, I've heard that the trees that were cut down were, are not part of the criteria for making a decision tonight. So I'm, I'm confused on that point. And, and my understanding of this is the reason why they would be willing to come up with some additional money is because time is money. And so they get to build or do things sooner, two years sooner, as opposed to waiting until, uh, two thousand and twenty-three. So is that time factor then what's actually part of the criteria? Or, or are the trees that were cut down in fact part of the criteria that we're making these decisions on?
Mr. Anderson, can you explain that, uh, in terms of the number of trees, the twenty-five percent that should have been, like, you know, that whole, there seems to be some algebra in here that we need to understand.
Well, as, as, I'm not sure I can get into the algebra, because I got a D on that in high school. But, um, the, the code, the section, uh, chapter eight away to the city's code says that if they, if a property, uh, went through that, that, you know, tree harvesting process, which this property did, they've gotta wait five years until after that harvest ended to, to essentially do different actions of development. And partitioning and subdividing is one of them. It doesn't say annexation, so we can't prohibit them from annexing simply because they cut these trees down. We can't make them wait five years to annex, simply because, because these trees were cut down. We can say, no, you've gotta wait five years to take these development actions. And they're complying with that five year requirement. Um, they, we understand that the, the neighbors and members of the community are upset that these trees were removed. So they're making this offer of fifteen thousand dollars to address that. Is that helpful?
So that's, is that extra, that's not in any way under the, the annexation requirements. It's just absolutely not part of that, is this tree deal? Except as we put it in at their request, or how did that?
I can, I can let Lisa Anderson talk about, you know, the, the mechanics of how we, how they, they came to make this request. But my understanding is it's not, it's not addressing the criteria. It's addressing the separate issue of folks that are upset about the trees being removed.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely, um, Mayor and Council. So we, we, we had a lot of complaints when the trees were removed and, you know, well. And you know what we said is, well, the property is not inside the city, but also they're allowed to do a timber harvest. But also then they can't subdivide for five years. And so people are really confused. So we knew that there was going to be, you know, concerns when this annexation was coming forward. The criteria for annexation, you know, that Pamela put on the screen about it's inside the urban growth boundary and it complies with our comprehensive plan and we can provide services. That's all met. There's one broad criteria that it's in the public interest. Generally, you know, we propose that it's in the public interest to bring in land that's inside the urban growth boundary so that we can have land available for development. So the criteria don't really address the trees. But we do feel like if you annex the property before the five years, but then try to prohibit them from submitting a land use application or let them submit a land use application, but we don't have some sort of agreement about when the final plat would be recorded, that we might be opening ourselves up for, um, you know, a, a lawsuit from the applicant or an appeal to Luba that they might say, we, you know, we're, we're building needed housing. Why are you preventing us from doing this within five years? And, and, and we don't want to, we don't want to go down that path with the applicant. Um, I think the third proposed condition is really important and we haven't really talked about it. Except in Pamela's presentation. That's the condition that says that they would enter into an agreement with the city that, that states they understand that they can go through the land use application and they can do the public construction, but they agree that they won't try to have that final plat recorded before the five years. So it'd be a binding agreement with the applicant that they're not going to come back later and, and, and appeal, you know, a subdivision that has a delay on it to Luba under some new state laws that have been passed for housing and, and, you know, expediting housing and whatnot. And so, um, we wanted to, you know, have that understanding with them before this annexation came forward. Um, and so we talked to them about that and we said, well, but people are still really concerned about the trees. You know, what, what can you do to help with that concern? And so that's when we talked to them about maybe you can plant more trees and larger trees. And then the idea for the money for the tree fund came in. So I, I agree with, um, the city attorney. It's not part of the criteria, um, but it's a, I think it's a, a good, you know, mitigation proposal from them because it gives us the reassurance that we were asking for. And it provides something for the neighborhood. When the trees are planted, they'll be larger and there'll be more variety. And it provides city for the money to go out and plant additional trees within the community. So we thought it struck a good, a good balance, but it's ultimately the council's decision.
Thank you very much. Counselor Anderson?
So thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, I, this is grown, I guess, using the tree analogy to be much bigger than I thought this is going to be looking at it. But I guess my question is, the fifteen thousand dollars isn't really buying the developers any time here. It's really just a good faith, uh, offer to deal with the issue of the fact that they could cut down four hundred trees and not three hundred trees and, and that's where they're moving. So they're by paying us fifteen thousand dollars, they're not able to move quick, more quickly on any of the issues they, they, they need to, to end up developing the property. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. That's extremely helpful. Thank you.
Okay, great. Is everybody? Oh, sorry, Counselor Leo.
Thank you. I thought I understood what was happening, especially with the first and the second proposal. But I want to verify again, especially if let's say counsel went for the second route, which was don't let them do anything until twenty twenty-three. Until twenty twenty-three, does that mean that they can't submit any land use applications? That cannot be submitted until after twenty twenty-three, July first, twenty twenty-three, correct? So there's nothing that could be done? No, no early planning, no, um, what's the, the language here specifically? Completing any site work, public construction, land use approvals that cannot be done until July first, twenty twenty-three?
Correct. That would be under the, the alternative proposal that Pamela presented where the annexation would be delayed until the end of the five years.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone, anyone else? Mr. Swan, did you want to, uh, respond to anything? Rebut anything?
Yes, for the opportunity.
Yes, seven minutes.
How many?
Seven minutes for rebuttal.
Good, thank you. Uh, I don't, I don't think I'll be that long. Uh, I have a couple of points that I would like to cover and, and then I'll, I'll, I'll check in with the rest of the folks on the application team. You know, did some quick math, uh, on, uh, some census data, you know, that, that, that's readily available. You know, in between twenty ten and twenty twenty, we had about twenty-three thousand people move to Salem. So if you were to smooth that out, average it out, that's two thousand three hundred people every year that are coming to our community. They need homes. We need, we need to go ahead and do this. So when you, we kind of said, well, what's the, what's the big deal if we wait a couple of years? You know, in, in trying to stop it. That, that is, those people are coming here and we need to take progress because we can't build houses until we have lots. And we can't get any lots until we do annexation. So, so that is the cause to the public in delaying, uh, any work for multiple years. So, uh, that's why we, obviously we, we want the, the approval. The alternative package of conditions, we don't really see that as much of an approval. Uh, that, that's really, uh, much more closely to a denial, frankly. When they say, well, yeah, you can come in, but you can't do any work for two years and you, you can't even apply for a permit. I, I, you know, for the preservation of the record, I see that as an unlawful moratorium. And, and I think that would be a real issue. I strongly ask and urge the city not to adopt that alternative package. But instead focus on the three conditions of approval that were proposed by the applicant, uh, and, and are agreed to, uh, by, by staff. One, one other thing I was thinking about is just for those who might be watching at home and, 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 or others who might be new. You know, the question might be, well, why is the code written in the way it is? Like, why don't we have the tree ordinance restricting tree cutting on all property? Not just in the city limits, but always through the urban growth boundary. Couple of things there. One, that you legally couldn't do it because it's a different jurisdiction. But I don't think you would even want to if you could. And, and, and the reason is, is when we, when we drafted the trunements and there was a significant rewrite of that thirteen, fourteen years ago. You know, it, it could, you could have, uh, included language about annexation and time that prohibition in there. But there's a significant difference between, you know, cutting the trees outside of the city limits and those that were on the infill projects. Because trees outside of the city limits were much more likely to be closer to what we have in this case. Trees that were grown closely together in, in a multi-acre stand that were always intended for commercial forestry harvest. You know, it, it, so it's a lot different than, than cutting down a couple of trees are, are making way of too many on, on an infill project. So I would suggest it, it wasn't a mistake back in, you know, thirteen, fourteen years ago, when the tree ordinance was, was drafted, that there was a loophole or, or something, that there was meaningful distinction between what kind of regulation you would have for cutting down trees inside the city limits and outside. And, and what kind of restrictions would you have on that time period? You know, so sometimes we, we, we kind of feel like, oh, you know, there's, there's a mistake that we need to cure. And, and I think, you know, I would caution the city to, uh, before leaving to that judgment. Cause there's nothing in the record, no legislative facts would, would suggest such an interpretation. And, you know, yeah. And lastly, there, there's been a lot of testimony, you know, there really is no basis for the denial of, of the annexation. You know, and, and sometimes it's like, well, you know, why are these conditions here? Cause normally you're, you're proposing conditions of approval in a manner to, to shore up a deficiency in that application. These really were good faith applications that were being proposed to try and, and garner goodwill with the community. It, it's unfortunate that it, maybe it's getting spun, like there's something to, to mitigate or like some harm that was, was done that we need to, to cure or violation. I think staff have been pretty clear, uh, repeatedly that there was violation. So, uh, I, I appreciated that, that kind of final repertory and answer to Counselor Anderson's question finally, I think we honed on it. It, it was intended to be a good faith offer by the applicant and we would ask counsel to, to, to accept it in that spirit and, and not try to barter for more. So, uh, unless there's other comments from my application team folks, I can, uh, be done unless there's questions itself or, or.
Alan, Alan, I also just want to, uh, address the, the topic of, of the timber harvest itself. I know there was a number thrown out of nine hundred thousand for the white oaks and, and some other numbers about the profits that were made on this timber harvest. And, and I can assure you that this timber harvest to cost us money. It didn't, it didn't end up, we didn't make a ton of money that we got rich off of all of these, all of these trees. Um, and I, I want to reiterate another point that, that Alan brought up in his initial testimony about that these trees were, were closely grown together. And to thin out seventy-five percent of the trees and leave twenty-five percent standing, a lot of these trees would fail. They would fall over and we've seen that in other developments that we've done in the city. This ice storm that we had earlier this year in another subdivision that we did dropped several large trees that we retained based on city's policy and almost hit, hit homes and, and, and other trees that we had removed legally would have, would have demolished homes. And so, um, you know, by, by planting these, these new trees that will grow up and with this neighborhood, it, it will be a much safer environment for these homes and for these families.
Great, thank you very much. Go ahead. I'm not sure, Dan, can we have questions at this point?
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Leo?
Um, I had a question actually for Mr. Eld. You mentioned that, um, when it came to the cutting of the trees that, um, you didn't make too much money. Are you, are you able to give us actual figure of how much it costs you and how much you actually, um, got in return?
I, I don't know. Uh, I don't have the number in front of me, but I'm, I'm fairly certain that it cost us money to harvest the trees. And we did, we did not make money on the harvest of the trees. So we spent more than we made on the merciful timber.
That makes sense. Okay, anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the city council find that the petitioners have signed a valid triple majority petition for annexation of the territory in conformance with Oregon revised statutes, ORS, chapter two, 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 determine that the petition satisfies the criteria of Salem revised code two, six, zero, point, zero, six, zero, C, and adopt order number two, zero, two, one, dash, one, ANX, attachments two through five. Apply the city of Salem RA residential agriculture zone to the territory from Marion County UT five, urban transition five acres and UT ten, urban transition ten acres. Withdraw the territory from the Salem suburban rural fire protection district and Turner fire protection district and approve the annexation subject to the following conditions. A, any future development of the subject property shall require compliance with SRC eight, oh, eight, dot, oh, five, oh, tree planting requirements. However, the minimum diameter of the trees to be planted shall be increased from one point five inch caliper to a two-inch caliber standard. And replacement tree diversity shall be increased by planting not less than five species authorized in the city's tree and vegetation technical manual. And B, prior to the recordation of a final plat for any partition, subdivision or planned unit development or occupancy of a commercial development, the applicant shall grant fifteen thousand dollars to the city, Salem City Tree Fund. And C, prior to the submission of any application for a land use approval, limited land use approval or permit for developing the subject property, applicant shall enter into an agreement with the city of Salem acknowledging and agreeing that the city of Salem will not record a final plat for any petition, partition, subdivision or planned unit development on and before July first, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Second by Lewis. Okay, do you want to speak to your motion, Counselor?
Sure. I, I think that, uh, this is, it's a fascinating case. I think that we are getting the best possible outcome from this situation in terms of, uh, benefit to the public and to the city. We need housing. There's no doubt about that. We need, uh, we need more of every kind of housing in Salem. Worst case scenario with this is we could, we could say no. And then in two years, the, it's going to be annexed anyway and we won't get any of the benefit to the public in terms of the tree, the tree money and the additional increase in size of the tree. I think this is a, I think staff has done a really good job here working with the developer. I think the developer has made a good faith, uh, commitment here. And I think it's a, I think this is a reasonable thing to do. And I think that actually delaying this action, uh, for two years would only harm the community more. And I'm, I'm in full support of my motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hoy. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. Well, I agree in the main with what Counselor Hoy said, but I also look at this and say, this is an annexation proceeding. It has nothing to do with how the property might be developed later. And under annexation, there are strict criteria that we look at. And the developer, uh, uh, has, or the, the person who's proposing the annexation has met all those strict statutory requirements and, uh, uh, an adjuster, whatever you want to call it. Goodwill, PR, whatever. They've also gone above that in their, in their willingness to give some money to the tree fund. Now, we couldn't force them to do that, but they could force us to annex it. So I, I, I'm going to vote for it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nordike?
Thank you. I appreciate the comments by my colleagues and the robust discussion. And I do recognize that we are discussing annexation and I agree that they've met the criteria and all those things have already said I won't need to repeat. And my, I will vote in favor, but with a word of caution because yes, we do need housing in all categories. We have a deficit of multifamily housing and I'm not hearing any indication from this developer to provide multifamily. They want to do single family units. And I don't know how you divide, and I know we're only talking about, you know, the back of a napkin, you know, a hundred ninety units, could it be a hundred fifty units? Who knows? But I'm concerned that, you know, once developments are done, they're done. And I will urge city staff to work with the developer in taking into account the climate action impacts of this development, the opportunity to ensure safe crossings for students and people going to school. Ability of a park. I want to know, is this going to be smart infill or is this going to be spread out McMansions? It is not a smart use of limited available land. Those are decisions I think that will leave for another day. But I know that as we start making decisions, we know this from other situations. As we start making decisions, some doors close that we can't later revisit, which is why I think, we had so many questions and so many skeptical looks for the developer because we know that once these decisions are made, they really can't be undone. And sometimes they can even bind counsel in further decisions down the road. So I will vote yes, but I've made my notes of caution. I've asked my questions and I will look forward to seeing how this important forty-one acre development unfolds. It's going to be critically important for our community. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Leon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this particular annexation is in my ward and there's a few comments that I, um, wanted to say. So first to developers and others who have argued in the handouts and the documents that they submitted that the housing will be affordable for single parents. Unless this single parent is a high, in a high-profile job, there's no way someone working minimum wage will be able to afford housing in this area. How do I know that? Because I live near there. I was a single parent. I worked in minimum wage jobs and there's no way I would be able to even afford an apartment today, much less a home in south, in the south side of Salem on my own. And when I first moved here ten years ago, my initial rent was five hundred and fifty dollars. But when I left that apartment, my rent was seven hundred and I moved to a new apartment. And by the time I left that apartment to where I live now, my rent was almost thirteen hundred dollars a month. And there's no way that I could afford that on my own. So please do not send letters saying that single parents can afford any of these units because we can't. I do not see any potential proposal suggesting that development will be affordable. There is no way that these home, when or if built, will be less than three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I imagine these homes will be closer to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more, given the property value and the area of South Salem that it's going to be in. Second to the community members, especially those who submitted letters, this land is surrounding a home that is in question. The home itself is not being touched, is not being annexed, nor is the city or county putting a road in the middle of the residence or in the property of the residence. As mentioned earlier, the land is in within the urban growth boundaries. And as such, there are certain rules that have to be followed when it comes to development. But today we are talking about annexation. We're not talking about an actual housing being built at this moment. There's still a process that has to be followed. This includes land use approvals that have to go through the city, including the planning committee, who will then make a recommendation before it comes to city council, where city council who's in office at that time could decide to agree with the planning committee, modify the decision or reject the planning committee's recommendation. Then from there, there's accounting requirements and all the other requirements that have to take place. But until then, my understanding that there is no plating or selling of lots to build homes. I do appreciate developers' attempts to mitigate the situation, such as planning at least five different types of adverse trees because you do need trees. That's no mistake there. And also the funding, providing funding into the tree fund helped pay for the planting and growing of new city trees. I do think $15,000 is on the low end. I do wish it was more. So even though I will vote in favor, I'm going to also vote like similar to Counselor Nordike with caution. Because we're talking about new units and more Salem residents to increase housing to address this need. But we also need to ensure the safety of our residents. We also need to ensure that there's actual space that's built for families, especially if we're planning on bringing in families. And most importantly, like echoing what Counselor Nordike said, smart building for homes and for our community.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Oh, sorry, Counselor Lewis.
Yes, I will be supporting the motion. A couple of things that may seem a little odd, but what I truly wish is that we had a little bit more flexibility in our tree ordinance. In 2017, if we had more flexibility, we would have 180 houses that they proposed then. We don't have any of those houses now. 190 houses, we talked about in this, but they won't even start for another two years. Just because we don't have any flexibility. And I, I really encourage the council to go back and listen to the last hour and proportion out the amount of time we've talked about trees and the amount of time we've talked about housing. Not affordable housing or anything, just housing in general. And I'm one thinks that that's the most important thing, even though trees are also important.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anyone else? Okay, if the recorder would please call the roll.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Yes.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leon.
I with the caution I mentioned earlier.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. We'll move on to our next public hearing. Another annexation. It's 21150. I'll open the public hearing on that. Recorder, would you like to read the title?
Sure. Well, the City Council will now conduct a public hearing to consider the annexation of territory located at 3880 Croizen Creek Road South and city-owned lands into the city of Salem. The criteria applicable to the decision is SRC 260.060(c). Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable criteria or other criteria which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue prior to the close of the public hearing or in writing, or failure to provide statements or evidence with sufficient specificity to provide the parties and the City Council an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. The hearing will be conducted with the staff presentation first, and it would have been followed by testimony, however, no one signed up to testify for this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, a staff presentation. Ms. Cole. You're on mute right now.
Okay, now we, all right. Good evening. I'm Pamela Cole, Planner with Community Development Department. Tonight, the second staff report for an annexation is case number C 738 for territory at 3880 Croizen Creek Road South and adjacent city-owned lands. I'd like to enter the staff report, attachments, and presentation into the record. The territory is a little more difficult to see in this case because it's an unusual shape. The boundary includes 2.65 acres of territory and that encompasses about 0.84 acres of right of way. The subject property includes one tax lot owned by the original petitioner that is at 3880 Croizen Creek Road South and then six tax lots that are owned by the city and some are part of the Croizen Trail. The Croizen Trail is identified as a park on the city's maps. And then three of the city's tax lots are very narrow strips that don't display well at this scale. They're located at the bottom of the territory, abiding the city limits there. Steph in Public Works recommended that the city join this annexation as a petitioner to bring the city-owned tax lots into the city boundary. The property at 3880 Croizen Creek's contiguous to city limits and the annexation application was originally required by that owner because they needed to obtain city sewer services. Council previously authorized the sewer service connection in September 2019. The annexation territories designated developing residential in the comprehensive plan map and adjacent properties are designated either developing residential or single-family residential. The subject property and the adjacent properties in Marion County now are zoned urban transition 5 acres, which is consistent with the comprehensive plan designation. The nearby properties in the city are zoned residential agriculture or single-family residential. The territory, again, would automatically be zoned RA residential agriculture upon annexation. We're not aware of any plans for the owner at 3880 to develop the property beyond what's there now, which is a single-family dwelling. In the 2020 aerial photo, you can see the dwelling at 3880 Croizen Creek Road. They have an access that provides a driveway to that property from Croizen Creek. They don't actually have frontage on Croizen Creek Road South. And in the picture, you can see that the city-owned properties are largely covered with trees. The city has no plans to remove trees or make any other changes to the Croizen Trail property at this time. City staff comments are included in the staff report. The Public Works Department said an urban growth area permit would only be required if the applicant proposes to develop the property as it's defined in SRC Chapter 200. Southwest Association of Neighbors was notified but has not submitted comments and we did not receive any citizen comments on this case. Again, this is a voter-exempt annexation because all of the property owners have signed the petition. The territory is in the urban growth boundary, subject to comprehensive plan and contiguous to city limits. It's up to council to decide whether to annex the territory. Staff found that the annexation met the annexation criteria, again, including whether it's consistent with comprehensive plan and state goals, allows early, efficient, and timely provision of services, and serves the public interest. Therefore, we're recommending that council find that the petitioners signed a valid petition, determine the annexation satisfies criteria, and adopt the order. Apply the City of Salem Residential Agriculture zoning and withdraw territory from Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District. That concludes the presentation. Of course, I'm available for questions.
Great, thank you. There are no members of the public or the applicant signed up. So are there any questions from Ms. Cole? Right, there you are. Counselor Nordike.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Cole, can, it sounds to me, but I need to double check. As you know, this is my ward and I have a lot of folks who are deeply invested in keeping the Croizen Trail in its forested and natural state. Does the city anticipate any impact to the Croizen Trail as a result of this annexation?
None that I know of. And I've spoken with Public Works and there's no plan to change it.
Mr. Fernandez, are you out there?
I am right here, Mayor.
Oh, you are.
The annexation is simply so that the city council can have jurisdiction over those trails.
Is this the one we worked on a number of years ago, getting this piece of property on that?
No, that is just to the northeast of this property.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
So in other words, we're getting control of this property and that includes control over a section of the Croizen Trail, which sounds like a good thing to me. So.
Very good. Any further questions?
Not for me.
Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, Pamela, I'm just quizzical about a comment that's in both of these tonight. It's on, on this one, it's on page three of six and it goes, "The law prohibits the city only from referring the question of annexation to voters, but does not mandate a city to annex a property simply because of a petition has been received. City council has the ultimate say." I, I struggle with that because understanding the law the way I do, if, if the application is received and it meets all the requirement, I guess I would need an example of how the city could turn down an annexation that meets the statutory requirements.
If I could answer that. So the second part of your statement there, if it meets all the requirements, would be the operative phrase there. So if this is essentially a land use process and if it meets the requirements, the council would be obligated to approve the annexation.
Yeah. And I, and the reason I bring it up is we, we do have a number of new counselors and, and land use is so much fun. But I think this could give some a misimpression that the city council really has the say-so on annexations and because of the new state law, that's not exactly true.
Hey, well, on that bright note, anyone else? Okay, Counselor Nordike, need a motion?
I went just looking for the unmute button.
Thank you.
So I move staff recommendation for number 21150. Let me read off the recommendation. I move that we find that the petitioners have signed a valid triple majority petition for the annexation of the territory. Number two, determine that the petition satisfies the criteria of SRC 260.060 subsection c and adopt the order number 2021-2ANX. Number three, recommendation number three, apply the City of Salem RA zone to the territory. And recommendation number four, withdraw the territory from Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District.
Second.
Who seconded? Hoy, okay. Any discussion of the motion? Okay, let's go ahead and have the recorder call the roll.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leon.
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Motion passes. Very good. Okay, go to special orders of business. Five A, motion from Counselor Virginia Stapleton regarding the City's Care Corps Youth Child Program.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
You're ready?
Yes. I move council direct staff to provide a report to city council regarding how the city can better support and expand the impact of our city's Care Corps program.
Second.
Thank you. So I learned about this.
Nordike. I heard her first.
I learned about this program when we were in training and I'm really happy to know that it was there. Very excited to learn more about it. As I brought this motion forward, the great staff helped me even understand it more. So basically, the Care Corps is a core, is managed through the city's youth development program. It's a summer jobs program for city youth. The program connects youth with area businesses through grants and personal coaching. The program has been successful in generating high levels of participation, particularly with the city's underserved communities. The restrictions on in-person meeting due to COVID-19 have limited the program's reach over the past year. I would like staff to provide a report to city council analyzing methods that the city could use to enhance the program's effectiveness and reach in order to provide greater benefit to the city, especially in this time of COVID, when we know that our underserved areas in the city and people need our help even more now. So that's what I'm trying to do.
Okay, sounds good. So you're asking for a staff report to be returned.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any discussion? Counselor Leon.
Thank you, Counselor Stapleton. I love this idea and I'm glad that you brought it up. If I remember, this was the youth coordinator position that we, that we maintained, I think about two, two years ago during, during budget negotiations when we were talking about keeping, keeping this program. So my question is, are we, do we normally get annual reports or updates in terms of how many youth the program has provided support for? And if not, could that be included within the staff report?
I'm sure. Mr. Powers, do you want to speak to what, what, what you see is the scope of this? Will that include what Counselor Leon is asking about?
We certainly can include that information, yes.
Good. I think she'd appreciate that. We all would. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, if the recorder would please call the roll.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leon.
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Okay, you're on a roll.
I know. I'm so excited. All right, I move to direct staff to provide a report to city council regarding the feasibility of closing Union Street from the pedestrian bridge in Riverfront Park to Winter Street and from Winter Street, from Union to Market Street on Saturdays from May through October in support of safe, livable, and sustainable city with a thriving economy and a vibrant community.
Second.
Second by Anderson.
Thank you.
Would you like to speak to that? Could you do the parameters of those again, just to hear?
Yes. Sorry, I kind of stumbled a little bit. So this is from Union Street, which is a family and pet-friendly bikeway right now. And from the Union Street Bridge, which would connect this downtown area to West Salem, and all the way up to the Saturday Market, which is on Winter Street.
Okay.
And then from the Winter Street, Union intersection, all the way up the Maple Winter Bike, or Greenway is what it's called, up to Market Street. So that is the area that we're talking about. And these sections, closing these sections would designate this bike and pedestrian-friendly area. It would reduce car traffic and provide safe passage for walkers and bikers from West Salem, downtown, North Salem, and all the surrounding areas there to the Saturday Market. This would also enrich the lives of our residents, enhancing the quality of our neighborhoods and support our local economy by supporting the farmer's markets.
Very good. Let me just double check on this. You're talking Winter and Maple between. Is that clear in your motion that you want to look at Maple as well?
So I, it's not. And let me clarify, it's Winter Street from Union to Market. So right, I wanted to clarify, what I call the Green Way is actually Winter Street. So I will refrain from that and just call it Winter Street.
Okay, because you mentioned Maple. I was thinking, I know there's a bikeway, the whole length of that. I just wanted to make sure I understood what you wanted them to do.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Any further discussion? If the recorder would please call the.
Counselor Leon, have your hand up.
Thank you. I just had one. I mean, I like this idea. Oh, sorry. I like this idea. I just have a question in terms of how to, are there any businesses along that area that could potentially be impacted? And if so, what has been their, their thoughts or statements? I want to make sure that there was input from businesses who could potentially be affected, especially on a Saturday.
So do you want me to answer this?
Sure.
We, we originally, when I talked with Mr. Fernandez and Mr. Powers about this, we talked about the area and of course, it being a Saturday. Union Street doesn't have a lot of business fronts, but I do know that the Lee Apartments there has an entry point on Union. And so that would be something that we talked about needing to mitigate, communicate really well with them and see if there's any way around it. But I'm sure that that would be part of this direction, just to, to survey all of those businesses to make sure that it's not going to be a negative impact for them.
Okay. Any, any other questions? Okay, now, Amy, let's, let's vote.
All right, Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leon.
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Now, Counselor Nordike, you pulled 3.2A. You have a motion?
Um, yes, I do. I move staff, staff recommendation for the Broadway project. And then a question.
Second by Hoy. Okay.
Great, thank you. So I'm just. Great, thank you. So I'm just trying to scroll to the motion now after we were just on the other page. So I understand that this is a part of the city's multiple unit housing tax incentive program. And I just want to understand a little bit more about that. Is this something that is going to be used to promote affordable housing in our area? I see in general what it's about, but I didn't see a lot of discussion about that. And I'd like to know, are these going to be high-end apartments? Low end, a percentage of each? That's what I'm curious about.
Ms. Rutherford, are you?
Yes, I'm here and happy to speak to this. The Mootip program is not specifically targeted for affordable housing. We have other tax exemption programs that are. When this program was put into place several years ago, it was really a focus on bringing more housing into the center of the city rather than out on the fringes of the city. So it was really about increasing density and just bringing more units online rather than targeting the affordability level of those units. Since then, we have established other programs like the low-income rental housing property tax exemption that really focuses on affordable units and then have been using urban renewal tools also for affordable housing and to subsidize that. But that is not what this program targets.
Can you take, can you have Mootip and the affordability instruments? Can you have one of each or?
This program is, so it's a 10-year exemption. And the other programs for the like, the low-income rental housing property tax exemption, that exemption is renewed annually and you have to prove the affordability level. You couldn't really layer them because you can only the taxes for one or the other. You can't accept the taxes more, more than once.
When does this program end?
It's coming up for renewal. Yes, we'll be back here, I think probably next month to extend this program.
Okay.
So this is governed by state statute and the statute has extended it out for another 10 years.
Okay, Councilor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to clarify, Ms. Rutherford, this, is this the lot that is across the street from Safeway on Center Street? That's just sort of been a vacant gravel lot for a long time?
No, this is, this is on Broadway. This is across from McMinimans.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had the wrong gravel lot in my head. Thank you. Thank you.
Isn't there a building across from McMinimans there? What's?
There is. It's a kind of kitty corner, kind of kitty corner over there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilor Nordike, I'm sorry, you, I'm sure have more questions.
Oh, oh, that, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, well, I'm seeing, you know, you know, I do see that where it says under public benefits addressed, it says rental rates will range from $950 to $1,600 per month. So I do see some range. That makes me feel a little bit better. I mean, if the rates were starting at $1,600 or higher, I'd be a little more concerned. But I, I mean, because all I hear is how there's virtually no vacancies anywhere in town. So it's really more of a comment. I mean, I, I think that's a little helpful. But as you can tell, the reason I keep asking these questions is that I want to know what are we doing to incentivize that to be at least a portion of housing? And obviously this will generate much more benefits than a gravel lot. I get that. So I'm satisfied by seeing that the rental rates will at least start at 950.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three or four questions.
Okay.
Starting off, kind of commenting the question. The, the purpose of this is to stimulate multiple using, multiple housing units. And as I read the report, this, it was adopted in 1976. So that's 44, 40, 44 years ago. And we've had seven. In 44 years, we've had seven developers that have used this property. So my question is, how was this actually stimulated anything? I mean, that's one development every, every six and a half years.
Yeah, is this like intergenerational stuff?
So that's why, so I guess, why do we need this program if in fact the people are coming on, the, the buildings that are coming on are pretty much market rate and we've only had seven in four, in 44 years?
Because until, I think South Block Apartments was the first one, I think, to use this program. We were having zero development. And until our, our rent rate started to increase to a point within the downtown core, the projects penciled. And at that point, they were still only penciling with this kind of benefit. So that's why we, we have such a shortage of housing and had so little housing constructed in our downtown core. Because it was the balance between the cost and, and the rents that they could receive.
Then the, if my, I may, Mr. Mayor. There are 19 criteria that needed to, and, and our rule is that we only, they only need to meet one out of 19? I mean, that's what it says. One out of 19, that seems a little crazy. I'll just use that word, crazy to me.
Well, you just wonder why they're not rushing the doors on this thing, Tom.
Yeah, they only have to meet one out of 19?
So are you correct that they only have to meet one out of 19? I don't know if that is statutory requirement or when this was adopted back in 1970, I forget which year you said.
Six.
Seventy-six. If, if those criteria were established at those, at that time, or if they've been updated since then. But we do have an opportunity coming up very soon if we extend this program where we could look at revisiting criteria.
That's perfect. And I, and I'm glad to hear earlier in your comments that we're going to have to revisit and re authorize this program if we choose to do so. So I presume you're going to answer some of these questions. Why one out of 19? Why seven in 46 years or 44 years? Excuse me, I don't want to exaggerate. And then I have another question and it's on page four of your, the staff report. It basically says that this, it, it's only going to happen if they complete it within a mark by oh, I can't see that here now, but oh yeah. Construction has to be completed before January 1 of next year. But we have till September to approve this? Even approving it now, how, how are they going to get construction done in, you know,
Already under construction.
Seven months?
Yeah, it's already under construction.
So then, then if it's already under construction, what are we doing, doing anything here?
So we typically, and I think on all of these that have been improved, at least since the time that I've been here, the projects have been under construction. At, at the time they come forward, asking for the property tax exemption.
Well, then that to me begs the question of why do they need it if they've already decided without this tax exemption, we're going to go ahead anyway at the market rates? I mean, they've already made a decision to go ahead without even knowing that we would approve it unless, well, because they only had to meet one out of 19. So it's, it's, it seems to me, this is just a rubber stamp. And they've already started. So now are we supposed to say, what happens if we say we're not going to approve it? Are they going to say, okay, we abandoned the project? I would presume they started with the understanding that with or without the project, they were going to be, it was going to be a profitable development to them.
Well, I think they also undertook the project looking at the history of recent approvals of this program.
Seven in 44 years?
It's, it's seven in 44 years, but it's been seven really in about 10 years.
Oh, no, I beg to differ. One was completed in 87, one was completed in 1990, one was completed in 2000. You know, so half of them were, were in, in the last century. So there've only been four in, in the, in the, in the 2000 and above.
Yes, with our current economic cycle, development cycle.
So we There was a pretty good development cycle from 200, 2000 to 208 when everything crashed. I, I, this whole
Okay, we're going to have a discussion on this motion here in just a minute.
I understand. I'm done with, I'm done with my questions, but
I do want you to know, I covered this as a reporter at the Capital Journal, but I was a very young person with long dark hair at that time. That's how, that's how long ago this thing was.
So I, 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 thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so I'm not saying, I, you know, I, I, I'm probably going to end up voting for this because the, the wheel, the ball is rolling, but I really have some serious questions when, when this comes up for renewal.
Additional context as well, we do have an urban renewal grant in this program because it has been a priority of the urban renewal area to incentivize housing in the urban core.
I agree with all that. And, and I, I've saw the development before and I thought it was a good one because we need housing downtown. So
Right.
But I
Let me let Councilor Stapleton.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just gonna, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to say that I, I think that this building is nearing completion. It's, it's, it's really quite far along. And I had the same thought process there as well. And Director Rutherford took some time to call me and walk me through this whole process so I understand what we're talking about even better. So again, thank you for your time. Now, in our phone call, and I, I'd like for you to repeat that here for, for everyone else. It's just the taxes on this lot for 10 years that would be going to the urban renewal district. So the city itself would not be missing out on any monies, but the urban renewal district would be down that money for 10 years. And could you tell me exactly, or around about, sorry, how much that would be for?
So in, yeah, in this particular situation, the revenue would be coming to the urban renewal area. The Mootip boundary extends beyond the downtown urban renewal boundary. So that's not the case with every single one of these that we have looked at or approved. But this one would be, and the property tax income is, try to scroll so I can get to the exact amount. It's in the 20,000-ish. And I've got to find where the exact amount is on an annual estimate here. I just flipped off of that. I was thinking it was 23,000. It might've been 26,000 a year.
I think that's okay.
Yeah, that's, and that's after this many years.
So about, about 26, 28,000 dollars a year for 10 years is what we're looking at.
Annually for about 10 years.
Yes.
Yeah, so you'd be looking at estimated around the two, 300,000 or a little less over the 10-year period.
Thank you.
Seth?
It does. Thank you very much.
Okay, Councilor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This isn't so much of a question, but more of a comment. I, and I've had similar questions that from, that Councilor Anderson has had regarding the number of criteria and that sort of thing. I'm looking forward to the discussion. But the, I think the thing that's important to remember about this is if we, if we deny this, and we could, if we deny this, that builder is going to, they're going to make money. They're going to have to turn a profit for this thing to succeed. How do you think that's going to happen if we deny this? They're going to increase the rates, the rent rates, right? Or the lease rates or the, the selling price?
Yeah.
Because they have to make money in order to make this thing work. They have loans and whatever. And so we could deny it and that's going to mean higher rents. Is that what we want? That's not what I want. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? Tom, I caught you. Oh, sorry. Yeah, Vanessa.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just point out that yes, when I saw the rent rates, you know, as my mind was working, I was thinking, wait a minute, these property tax incentives will help them keep those rent prices down. At least we hope so, right? I mean, we, we, you know, I don't know if there's any assurances being made that as a condition of this property tax exemption, though you, you can't just jack up your rates and clear a bigger profit. Director Rutherford, can you speak to that? Do we have any assurances that they will pass that savings on to their renters?
So the program has no stipulation or requirement tied to the affordability or rent increases. There are state regulations that govern how much rent could be increased from year to year. However, you know, right now they're just starting lease up. They would be at a point now where they're setting rents, right? And then from that point, then it would be governed by state statute and rental limitations on annual increases. But it's an opportunity right now for them to determine where they're going to set that base rent.
Yeah.
So without the incentive, they could start their rents higher.
And it's the growth rate in state law, about 7% in, in rents right now. It's a fairly, fairly solid cap on them right now. So and you can't go higher than that. And they appear to be pushing them downward. So you'll get kind of what you got now. And what you'll have is also more competition. That's about it. You'll have more, more spaces. Yeah, Vanessa, go ahead.
Sure, the, yeah, first of all, I'm, I'm kind of curious. Yes, I, I appreciate the fact that the state caps it from jumping year by year. That is helpful. I also just wanted to point out, because we've been talking about the number of public benefits, it says here that they indicate that five of the 19 public benefits has been met. And I'm wondering, maybe in the future, we should revisit how many public benefits.
Yeah.
One perhaps might be a good idea. And if there's any other way that we can incentivize them to start low with that rent so that, you know, even if they do jump the maximum allowed by state statute of 7% by year, if they're starting at 950 instead of starting at close to 1,600, that will give me more assurances that this program is really meeting all of our intended goals with tax exemption.
Thank you. Tom?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Rutherford, maybe I misunderstood what you said, but this, this is not taxes that are going into the urban renewal district tax increment sort of stuff. These are just waiving the taxes. So I, 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 I thought you might've said, at least I understood that the taxes are going into the urban renewal district, but they're not because they're tax, there are no taxes at all. And that's why we have to ask the other taxing districts if they will agree to forego their percentage. But the percentage that they are foregoing is going to go into the urban renewal district if they don't forego it. Is that correct?
So if this benefit were not granted, the tax revenue would come to the urban renewal agency. Districts would get that revenue. With this program, the urban renewal area forgoes revenue for 10 years.
Yes. And then, but we were, we will then ask the other school districts, whatever other districts we have, if they are willing to, let's say they say we're not willing to agree to this. Are they going to get taxes or will those taxes go into the urban renewal district?
Yes, they go to the urban renewal.
Well, then of course they're gonna, they're, they're gonna agree with it because what difference does it make to them?
Yeah, it doesn't hit their bottom line at all.
Okay, okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Councilor Leung? Leung?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question specifically about the application itself. I want to make sure that it's not an error. So if we're looking at the, it's says application for the multiple unit housing tax incentive program under section four, project information. It says specifically for a one-bedroom apartment, it's $1,600, but then for a two-bedroom apartment, it's $1,200. Is that an error there first and foremost?
I'm sorry, I'm looking, let me try to get to that. I don't have that open. I have on my attachments just the resolutions. I don't have the, their application.
Is there somebody who might be able to answer that question? Because it says specifically for a two-bedroom units.
I am, got something else opening up here. Sorry, it's really slow. Really slow. Sorry. Okay, here's the application. And so you are Yeah, I would think that that is a typo. We'll have to follow up and get that information.
Okay.
As to why the two-bedroom is showing us less than the one-bedroom.
Okay, and so then here's a, yeah, that's, that's, that's a little bit Okay, and, so then, here's a, yeah, that's, that's, that's a little bit concerning. Then, my second question, or more of a comment, so let's just say that we decide to approve of the, of the, of the application and go with staff recommendation, that we'll give them the tax property exemption. And let's say they decide in the year after their, after it's been built and people have rented the unit, and one year from now, there's, let's just say that they could raise the rent, and they could raise it to the max if they choose to, chose to. So, if they did choose to do that, let's say I chose a $950 one, which is 380 square feet, and that would sound to me like a studio apartment. If you, if it was at the total 7% increase, it would be, it was next year around this time, hypothetically, it could be $1,016.50. So, even though we may say that a studio apartment at 950 sounds like a deal today, one year from now, that's not going to be a deal. And then we're also taking consideration, these are studio apartments, because 380 feet can only go so far, and then when you count, take in consideration that the rest of them are the one-bedroom apartments or two-bedroom units, and the square feet is 487 for a one-bedroom unit, or 757 for a two-bedroom unit, these units are going to be pretty small as is.
Yes, they are. It's very comparable size-wise to the proposed project, and in the same range price-wise.
Okay. Well, then, let's go ahead, if there are no more questions or comments, and vote. You'd call the roll.
Counselor Stapleton.
I think I'll first with me. Aye.
Okay, Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leung.
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Motion passes. We're on to the next one, sorry, I had a, we're on to information reports, as I recall. Anyone have any questions on any of these? Yes, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 6B.
6B?
B as in boy.
Ah, okay, thank you.
I understand what it's for, it's for the, oh, the care center, medical sort of thing, just north, north of the creek there. My question is, which urban renewal district is this in? Because I'm, I'm going back to the Hanging Bridge again, and what I've been told by Director Rutherford, in the, in the, the district south of the bridge, we don't have enough money yet to, to build a Hanging Bridge, and the one north of the, so if this is north, will there be any way that money can help to, to get, complete the pathway between Bush's Park and Walts Marine Park?
Ms. Rutherford?
So, the, the, this funding for this grant match is coming from, not from the Riverfront, it's coming from the South Waterfront.
Okay.
Where we are, don't have enough funding to construct the whole project, in part because we have the Mootip beneficiary there. We'll see that, that, that tax revenue. So, but we do have enough to, to be able to provide a match for the project, for the grant.
Okay, but that's just for the project, we don't have any money left over for the bridge?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, you, you'll hear from me again on this, just like you heard from me on McGillcrest Road Improvement, that's not you, that's Director Fernandez, well, maybe you as well.
If you keep asking that question for enough years, that tax exemption benefit will have expired, and then we will have.
Then we could do it, yeah, great. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. We have no other business, I have one person left, I just want to just double check, Erin Westphal.
I don't believe they ever joined the meeting, Mayor.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, then we are adjourned.